All right, let's go ahead and get started. Can call this meeting to order. We typically start with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. When they issued under God into this hall with liberty.
Clerk group, please call the roll.
Agent.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Annie Keith.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sed.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
All present.
Next up is a request for approval of the city council meeting minutes for October 24th.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the city council meeting minutes for October 24th.
Second.
Clerk group, please call the roll.
Sed.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And we do have two items on special business tonight. We first is the appointment of Lily Johnson to the plumbing, mechanical and fuel gas code board. Is Ms. Johnson here tonight? Oh, perfect. You're more than welcome to come up and say something after we get a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of Lily Johnson to the plumbing, mechanical, fuel, gas code board for a four-year term ending November 2027.
Without objection. Yeah, well, if you want to come up and say anything, you're more than welcome. Oh, just behind the microphone there. Other side, other side. Keep going, keep going. There you go.
A little bit about myself. So I've been in engineering consulting for just over 10 years now. Looking forward to being able to support the city of Boise with the knowledge I gained in a variety of sectors from healthcare to K-12 schools and higher education. So.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. And for those who don't know, these are all volunteer roles. They serve a huge purpose at the city. So thank you so much for stepping into this role. Next up, we have four items on the interim budget change. I think Eric, you're presenting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We do have four interim budget changes for your consideration this afternoon. One, which which impacts fiscal year 23 and the other three associated with fiscal year 24. The fiscal year 23 item would increase the transfer from the general fund to the capital fund by 1.25 million dollars. This increased transfer would be supported by higher than budgeted fiscal year 23 collections in sales tax.
Eric, are these supposed to be pulled up on the main number monitor? We just talking through them, talking through them. Just great.
This this increase would not increase base revenues going forward as these revenues were anticipated in the development of the fiscal year 24 budget. This 1.25 million dollars would be used to support a portion of the loan associated with the facility at Warm Springs Golf Course, which is our second item. Items two, three, and four are fiscal year 24 items. So the item number two would increase the funding allocated for the construction of the facility at Warm Springs Golf Course from 9.6 million to 11.6 million dollars. After the fiscal year 24 budget was developed, refinement of preliminary estimates for the project was completed. This increase is anticipated to allow for the full construction of the project, including items such as security permitting and technology. The overall project will be supported through three funding sources. First, a 3.5 million dollar private donation. Secondly, 2 million dollars in reserves, which were generated from prior year activities at the golf course, at the golf courses. And thirdly, 6.1 million dollars in loans from the capital fund. Well, note that that 6.1 million dollar in loans will be repaid over a 10-year period from increased revenue revenues generated at the golf course attributable to the facility itself and planned increases in fees. The third item would increase the city council office's operating budget by $30,000. This increase would be offset by a reduction to the city council strategic planning contingency account. Beginning in fiscal year 24, the Boise City Council will fully represent districts as opposed to outlarge membership. With that change, additional staffing was added to support the city council as part of the fiscal year 24 adopted budget. This $30,000 increase in concert with previously allocated funding will allow for the full operational costs within the office of the city council, both for elected officials and for support staff. And it's anticipated that this adjustment would be made permanent as part of the fiscal year 25 budget process. The final item is a 190,000 dollar allocation for remediation efforts at the Discovery Center of Idaho site. A portion of that site was previously leased to the Navy and on that site, an indoor shooting range was was constructed. That facility remains on site, but is going to need to be removed to support expansion plans for the Discovery Center. It's been determined that that site is in need of remediation due to spent lead ammunition as well as asbestos. The Discovery Center will reimburse the city for $45,000 of that 190,000 dollar cost. And then additional reimbursement will be sought from the federal government for that remediation effort. However, seeking that reimbursement is anticipated to be a multi-year effort. And this remediation work needs to be advanced before that can be completed. So we will, staff will continue to seek that reimbursement in future years for that work. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for Eric? We also have Doug from Parks and Rec here as well.
Mr. Mayor, one question is just from my education. If in 2028, that reimbursement does come, does that, where does that go? Does it go back into public works? Does it like, yeah, where is it budgeted when it comes back?
Council member, that's a good question. I would anticipate that it would go back into the capital fund because that's where this this cost is being incurred.
Thank you.
Other questions? Lucy online?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Can Eric repeat that because I cut out a little bit and that might answer my question.
Council member, well, it's breaking up just a little bit. Can you ask that one more time? Maybe turn your camera off.
Yep, I'm gonna turn off my camera. I wanted Eric to repeat, Councilmember of Agent's answer to his question because I think that might answer my question, but it glitched out. So if he could, if he could repeat that, that would be great.
Sure, Councilmember. It's anticipated that if we receive that federal reimbursement in future fiscal years, that reimbursement would flow to the capital fund. The 190,000 dollar cost associated with that remediation is being partially offset by the contribution by the Discovery Center. But the remaining 145,000 is being borne by the capital fund. So if we were to receive that reimbursement, I anticipate it would go back into the capital fund.
Got it. And Mr. Mayor, one more question?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Eric. On the interim budget change, I'm very supportive of us putting any sort of extra money that we didn't anticipate receiving into the capital fund to replenish that as much as possible. Can you walk us through if any of that 1.5 will then go towards helping with the Warm Springs Golf Course? I'd like a little bit more clarification on that.
Absolutely, Councilmember. Yes, there are two, two actions here. The first item is to transfer 1.25 million in additional resources from the general fund to the capital fund. The second item utilizes that 1.25 million along with a portion of pre-existing fund balance to support the additional 2 million dollar investment at the Warm Springs Golf Course clubhouse. So all of that additional funding would go to support that facility and be repaid through future receipts at the course.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the interim budget changes as presented.
Second.
So the motion is second. Any discussion? Clerk, go ahead and call the roll.
Sed.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks, Eric. Item number six on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by council and will be acted enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Mr. Mayor, good. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion second. Any discussion?
Just a brief comment, Mr. Mayor. Under travel requests, I'd like to point out that those aren't travel requests. I refuse, I received a few inquiries about these and then all costs of the travel will be covered by the conference for that trip.
Great. I want to point out just a couple of items on here. I think item, we've got a couple of items that are related to ARPA funds and some collaborations between partnering agencies, nonprofits to address some housing issues. I know we've had some city staff working hard in negotiating these funds and getting them to the right spot. So just wanted to say a good job there. And then item number 18 is approving our contribution to Valley Regional Transit. And we have their director here tonight. And this this partnership is so important to our city, to the build out of our modern zoning code and so many things. And I appreciate all the work that staff and BRT has put into this as well as council who's heard about this several times. So with that, clerk, go ahead and call the roll.
Sed.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Next, we have the reading of the ordinances.
I just want to tell Director Clegg that we will be talking about tree mitigation later tonight if you want to stick around.
It's good to see you, Elaine. We've got one item on the first reading calendar.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on the first reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the second reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-41-23, an ordinance CAR 21-45 for property located at 9474 and 9650 West State Street, amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in section one of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from R-1A, single-family residential, 2.1 units per acre, to R-3D/DA, multiple-family residential with design review and a development agreement, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change and providing an effective date.
All right. And it looks like we've got three items on the second reading calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on the second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-38-23, an ordinance enacting a property tax rebate program as authorized by Idaho Code Section 50-235, reaffirming that 1.2 million dollars has been appropriated to fund the city of Boise City, the city of Boise Tax Rebate Program, providing instructions and deadlines for property taxpayers to apply for a property tax rebate, setting forth the formula to be used to calculate property tax rebates, providing a method for distribution of property tax rebates and providing an effective date. ORD-39-23, an ordinance CAR 22-15 for property located at 1715 South Maple Grove Road, amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in section one of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from R-1A, single-family residential, 2.1 units per acre, to R-1B/DA, single-family residential with a development agreement, 4.8 units per acre, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change and providing an effective date. ORD-40-23, an ordinance CAR 22-11 for property located at 6760 and 6776 East Warm Springs Avenue, annexing 3.2 acres of certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Boise City, establishing and determining the land use classification of said 3.2 acres as R/2D/DA, medium-density residential with design review and development agreement, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho City Tax Commission, providing that a copy of said legal description and map of said annexed lands and territory be recorded with the Ada County Recorder and filed with the Ada County Assessor and the Idaho City Tax Commission as required by law and providing an effective date.
And it looks like we don't have any items on the third reading calendar. So we're going to go ahead and move to new business. And we've got four items on public hearings today. The first is ZOA 23-2, the zoning ordinance amendment to modify Boise zoning code. I think we have Tim Keen here to present.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've got a few slides to share with you and go through a presentation using those slides. Before I start with that, I would like to acknowledge our staff that's been working so hard to get this back to you so we can proceed with implementation of the new zoning ordinance for the city on December 1st. Jessica Zilag is here, who leads our planning team. And then Deanna Dupuy and Lena Walker, who worked, as you know, so hard to get this ordinance to council in the first place and get it in the shape that it's in now. So we can take this action tonight and proceed to implementation. And then everyone on Jessica's team that's been working so hard to implement. This is a really big endeavor. It's a rare one for a city to not only change all its rules, but also change all its processes. So we've asked all of the staff at the city to embrace working in an entirely new fashion and and they have, and we're excited about getting started on December 1st. This is what I'll go through for you quickly tonight, just how we got to here, what's before you specifically for action tonight, our recommendation. And then I'm making note of a few points I want to make regarding next steps and implementation to give you some more background on where we'll be on December 1st or the the beginning of December. You all know this, but we had our first series of public hearings with the Planning and Zoning Commission this year in April, where they recommended unanimously in favor of this new ordinance. Council held its hearings in June and also voted unanimously in favor of of the new zoning ordinance. At that time, I think that's my next slide, in their motion to approve the new zoning ordinance, council asked that we return to city council in November, which we are tonight, November 14, to address any kind of cleanup that we needed to do to the ordinance in preparation for implementation on December 1st. So that's, that's why we're here is to, as you noted, when you acted on this measure in in June, to bring forward a cleaner version that addresses the modifications we needed to move forward with with implementation. So the application itself is to amend the city code Title 11 to correct minor spelling and grammar errors and provide clarifications where needed in this ordinance. As you know, it's a significant legal document with lots of references between different sections and we needed to clean it up to make sure it's easy as it can be to follow. That started at the end of August, August 29th. We, we made application to the city. We, as anyone must, to to change the zoning ordinance. We made application on August 29th and included a whole series, I think it's 18 pages like these two I have on the screen here, of where all these edits needed to occur. So that was published when we submitted our application on August 29th of this year. It's been available for anyone to see. What are the, what do those edits consist of? Then also, we continued to work. So council acted in June. We prepared an application for the city on August 29th that would next go to the planning commission. Well, as we continued to work towards the planning commission public hearing on these edits, we found these additional changes to make and they were included in a project report to the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 2nd. So these ones here, and you can read these, they're, they're very small changes, literally spelling or references to different sections. So those were included in the planning commission consideration of this. And I'll get to the planning commission's action in a minute. But before I get there, I wanted to add one thing tonight that that we came about, we came upon as we started to work with this new ordinance. As you can imagine, people are starting to figure, go through this document detail, starting to work through its implementation on specific sites in the city. And one thing that we realized is that, like some other things in this clarification amendment that we're bringing to you, we had included in these MX zones. So you'll remember the MX zones is really what our commercial zones are becoming. And there's a variety of them, including on this photograph here, Hyde Park, for instance, will be an MX1 zone. And there's MX1s throughout the city. But the intention had always been, as is the case now in in these more walkable kind of urban places, that there be no front setback, that that be zero. But in the, and as you can see here in the table that we have within the ordinance, it inexplicably showed five feet. So I'm requesting that we make that change tonight in addition, because as you know, in all that discussion about pedestrian design and getting density where we need it and it being designed for transit and walkability, this is an important, it's a small detail, but but it's important that we clarify that and get it right. So with that, in terms of findings for approval of this text amendment, we find that it complies and conforms with the comprehensive plan. This is just execution of a new zoning code for the city. And these amendments that we've presented to you and to planning commission previously address these issues of typos and inconsistencies throughout the code. And that it require, it is required for general public convenience and welfare. And again, just that it's, this is a cleanup that will allow us to proceed with all due clarity on December 1st. Planning Commission held their public hearing on October 9th. They had no testimony from the public regarding these changes and subsequently voted unanimously to recommend approval of these changes to city council. So as a conclusion, we're recommending approval of this case, ZOA 23-00002, a zoning ordinance amendment to modify city code, Boise City Code Title 11, per our staff report and including the additional corrections as presented by staff. That is our recommendation to you tonight. I wanted to go through a few implementation items related to this, just to give you a heads up on where we're headed soon. And and Mr. Mayor can do that now, or if you'd like to take our recommendation on the motion, either way.
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead and keep going and then we'll open up for questions for me too.
A few things we wanted to note for everybody. We, community engagement department within the city has been working with us on a complete redesign and overhaul of our website that will, that will align it with our new zoning ordinance and our processes. So we will very soon, on December 4th, 4th, launch this new website, which people could take advantage of. Whether you're an applicant or you're just a resident of the city interested in what's going on, it will be a much more understandable and accessible website. We're very excited about that. We're also, the IT department at the city has been hard at work with Jessica and her team on reconfiguring Acela, which is, as you know, is our technology, the software that we use to process permits and so forth. So Acela will be following our new processes. And we have an enhanced development tracker. I'll get to in just a minute because I've got a screenshot of the new development tracker. Regarding the transition to the new code, so it's in effect on December 1st, wanted to make sure everybody understands that we've got quite a few cases that we're working through now that are based on the existing code, not the new code. So what you'll be seeing in December, January, February, at least, are our boards and commissions with agenda items that relate to the existing code. It won't, so the public discussions we'll be having and hearings will be in those months related to the existing code, not the new code. Our plan is to transition to the hearings and decisions at that hearing level in March to new code. So the point is that you won't really, you won't see new code cases at our boards and commissions until March. Hopefully, we'll get through the existing code cases by the end of February. But that may be optimistic. They may move into March and April as well. So I'm just, there's going to be that period of transition from the existing code to the new code. And here's just some other dates related to that. In March, we we do know and we're preparing to and people are aligning themselves to have cases that would be based on the new code at PNZ, our design review commission now, and historic preservation commission in March. So that's when you'd see that transition on their agendas. Here's a screenshot of the development tracker that we're very excited about. So this, this will give residents of Boise so much more visibility on what's happening in their neighborhood. So we talked about this during the zoning rewrite process, but the city's CE department and IT have been working on this to make it even better. So you will be able to sign up for emails. You can see there on the right, based on your area of the city. So you could receive emails on new Kate, new applications that have been submitted. This is much more intuitive to follow. You don't have to have an advanced degree in Acela or anything to to understand what's happening in the city. So we're really pleased about the development tracker. Regarding ongoing evaluation and engagement, and this has to do with our reporting to city council, what we'll do next year is provide quarterly reports, written reports to city council on how it's going. And that will include the ways in which we're going to measure our success. We've got kind of a dashboard. We're preparing for city council so that we can come to you on a quarterly basis with a report on how it's going. And of course, that will be a report on how it's going for us, for our customers and for residents of the city. So we'll be doing a lot of engagement. We'll continue, we're doing engagement right now, as you know, with with residents of the city. We've got four public meetings that we've scheduled for. We started last week and we'll go for the next several weeks where we're talking about these things around implementation. But we'll continue to to reach out to neighborhoods and have meetings with neighborhoods into next year, throughout next year. So we're getting feedback from residents and neighborhoods. And then also the people that are utilizing the code as we come through, as they come through to seek to to build things. And then one year from December 1st, so December 1st, 2024, would be the time that we would come back for any amendments to the, to the ordinance based on our experience with it for those 12 months and the feedback we're getting from neighborhoods and residents as well as people that are using the code. So quarterly reports next year and then back to council for any kind of adjustments we feel that would be necessary to make it even better next December 1st, 2024. I wanted to make a note of things to anticipate, and this is for city council, but it's for anybody in the city. Just, you know, we'll have a new code that's active on December 1st, but we need to remember that in 2024, as you're seeing construction going on in the city, that's not based on the new code. That would be something that was approved previously under the existing code. Now in 2024, we may have small things that are new code related. Somebody's building an ADU, for instance, or you're doing smaller neighborhood scale things or, you know, the neighborhood cafe provision, which is in the new ordinance. Those things could happen next year. You could see that happening. But larger scale things aren't going to be until 2025. Also, Nick, also in 2024, we do expect to have some larger scale things happening. But for instance, the CWI property downtown at Whitewater and Main Street, that that will be zoned with the new ordinance so they can proceed with their mixed use development. We're very excited about it. They will have to go to the design review commission. And so they will do that as soon as they can, but it will be based on the new code. So that's one that we'll see. And that will be in planning and design, not not construction yet. Capital Campus, which of course is a city's property and Boise State University that we came to council fairly recently and and chose a partner developer to redevelop that block. So that will be proceeding with, not unlike the CWI properties, it will have the zoning with the new code and they can proceed to design and planning. Construction will start until 2025. And then in the case of the ITD property on State Street, of course, which has been quite in the news, that's a case that will be a rezoning. So that will go to planning, planning and zoning commission and to city council to seek a new zoning because in the, in the new code, it's it's owned AI. So that will will go through a public process to get the zoning established for that property. And we'll, we'll have that in 2024. But then large-scale new code projects, for instance, within the MX zones or even larger-scale neighborhood things that are based on the incentives that we've included in this new ordinance. larger scale neighborhood things that are based on the incentives that we've included in this new ordinance, construction on those wouldn't be until twenty twenty five. So that is the conclusion of my report to you tonight, and I'm glad to be here as we expected to be. So we can get council's action on these amendments and be ready to go on December first.
Thanks, Tim. Do you have any questions for Tim, whether it's a minor edits or implementation?
Mr. Mayor.
What?
No, no questions. I just wanted to thank you for your presentation. In particular, I really do like the development tracker. I think that was a critical component of the conversation we had with the community, and I really appreciate the work that's been done there.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Um, I just wanted to say that there's, you know, so many people over the last few years that have been involved in this residence and steering committees and staff and, you know, it's been really exciting to see us get a little bit closer to the implementation. And I've talked to a lot of people recently who are also looking forward to seeing what this gives them as property owners, the flexibility that they'll have. So excited to see it move forward and look, looking for a dead testimony tonight, too. Thank you for all your work.
Mr. Mayor.
But yeah, thank you. This, I mean, it's never done, right? Now's the typos, next year's the revisit, and we won't even start seeing projects under this code, meaningful ones, big prominent ones until twenty twenty five, but I mean, you know, hundreds, if not thousands of people testified and provided input into this, tens of thousands of people voted for this fundamentally in the last election. The community is behind this. It's the right thing for Boise. You're at the tip of the spear for doing a really cool thing. And even if fixing all the typos is less fun, it's important and I'm glad we're cleaning it up and marching forward. So with that, unless yeah, with that, I will move approval of Z O A twenty three zero 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 two, which is a zoning court ordinance amendment to modify both Boise city code title eleven per the P D S staff report that we received, and also the additional corrections pertaining to the MX zones that we discussed tonight. Um, there's still a public hearing, Patrick.
Oh, well, later on. Talking about this, I apologize. So I withdraw that motion and let's hear from the public.
But if there's any more questions for Tim, we'll take any of those at this point.
I do have one.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Tim, my question, I had heard a criticism that we had a height minimum in some zone that was higher than what the a building code standard somewhere in the seventy foot range. Does this ring a bell? And could you?
It rings a bell, yeah. And then this is the MX three zone, which we're allowing a height of seventy feet, which, and we base that height on buildings that have been built in Boise and your ability to build on, based on the the building code. So we have great examples of it. We actually used buildings that have been built in Boise that are seventy feet as the models for that height in that zone. So it is consistent with building code and then can be built, if that's the question.
I don't think it was the, what I had heard is we, we had done like seventy two and there was something in the building code that's seventy four, but if that's not ringing a bell, I'll get the specific question and just bring it to you offline.
Mr. Mayor, um, so Con, I'm not sure if this was something that I, because I had heard that I had heard that the maximum height requirement was seventy eight feet in one of the zones, but that actually to take full advantage of that, the builders needed seventy eight feet. And so, and that, that's what I had heard, and I wonder if that's what you're referencing.
You said seventy eight and seventy eight. Was it seventy four and seventy?
Sorry, seventy, seventy five feet was the maximum and seventy eight feet was what was required.
This is, this is sounding closer to what I.
Okay, I'm, I'm Mr. Mayor, Councilman Nash, I kind of misunderstood the, the direction of that question, but yes, we heard that as well, but but we've been working with builders on this issue throughout this process and have found that the seventy feet that we're comfortable with that and continue to recommend it.
Councilmember Willetts, did you have any questions before we turn over the public?
I did. Thank you so much. And Tim, thanks for your presentation, and I'm really thrilled to hear about the opportunities that we'll have to reevaluate, look at what's working, and then also just the timeframe in which we'll be looking for actual changes. As you pointed out, that several of these things won't even become evident for at least eighteen months. As you think about the public feedback, and I know that there have been a few sessions already, what sort of feedback are are you getting at the planning department right now and what sort of questions? Can you, can you give us some insight into that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, thank you for that. You know, it's a little bit hard for me to characterize in the sense that kind of the questions and comments are somewhat all over the place and I'll, I'll tell you that we had one public meeting so far. And that was last week. We'll have another one tomorrow night, actually, and then two more. And and the discussion and and Mr. Mayor can characterize his description of it. I thought there was quite a bit of discussion around the regulations themselves, like things that we included and whether that was appropriate or not, which is interesting to talk about, but that decision was made in June. So that was part of the meeting. And then another part just had to do with questions and concerns about public notice on things and neighborhood involvement. And and one of the adjustments we've made to our presentation based on that meeting is we're going to, tomorrow night, for instance, we're going to go deeper into the neighbor and neighborhood notification around the different types of approvals we'll be doing because there was just, I think, some confusion about that. And and we didn't do a great job at that first meeting of focusing on that. We were more focused on what's the new process and how do you follow it? And and most of the people at that first meeting were more concerned about how do I get noticed and those kinds of things. They were certainly happy about the development tracker, but we needed to dig in deeper on the, how people know about different things happening in their neighborhood based on the type of approval that's happening, and we'll do that more tomorrow night. So Councilmember Willetts, I think will adjust and do a better job of addressing those kinds of issues we heard in the public. With regard to customers, we've been talking to a lot of groups and of course been working with various people that are preparing to submit based on the new code and and that's mostly just about kind of learning what these new code requirements are and everybody working through how to design based upon them, both the applicants and our staff. So we've had a great opportunity in these couple of months leading up to implementation to really work through kind of troubleshoot, how do you work with this code? And and those are, I can't say that there's anything that really stands out, council member, and in in regard to those discussions, it's just kind of more very site specific, but there's nothing that's been alarming in that process. I hope that answers the question.
Yep. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Any more questions for staff here before we open the public?
Yeah, I just had one more. Tim, as we hear items in the next couple of months, I'm probably going to have questions about how an application under the old zoning code would be treated under the new zoning code, just so that there isn't terribly disparate treatment between an application that's approved in March and one that's approved in April. So just let staff know that they can anticipate questions about how we would treat different items that come before us.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nash, I'm glad, kind of glad you brought that up because there's going to be this period of of learning for customers in the sense that we, we, we've created a process that we think is going to be much more predictable and efficient for customers. But like us who process applications, those making them are also used to the existing process, whether it's really knowable or not, you know, they've kind of come to know it. And, and so there'll be this transition to this new process, which hopefully we can work through any frustration, but you might hear a little bit of that and and happy to speak to it if it comes up because we there's reasons for the way we've designed the process that have to do with getting better quality out of construction in in Boise, creating more predictability and help and ensuring that the new code is as successful as it can be because as you know, it's not just a set of rules. It's, it's like our aspirations for the city. So we want it to be successful. So welcome that kind of check in with you or any of council as we progress with implementation because there's that it's, there's going to be a newness for everybody.
With that, we're going to go ahead and open it up to the public. I don't have anyone signed up in here. Oh, we do have one person. Okay, go ahead. Then you have three minutes. Just go ahead and state your name.
Marissa Key, thirty two seventy nine South Cloverdale Road, Boise. And I just had hopefully something that can be clarified on one of the slides that Mr. Keen had regarding the setbacks in the MX zone. I thought that we had discussed at one meeting of the zoning code committee, having a setback for in the MX zone in the front for, to account for shy distance on a sidewalk, so that you would have a true ten foot or a true five foot sidewalk.
Marissa, what I'd ask, like you're offering testimony, not the ability to ask staff questions, but you can certainly, you know, direct that concern to council. And then if council wants to follow up with staff, they certainly can.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that, that's, we had a meeting with some street advocate type people, and that was one of the issues that was brought up was accounting for that shy back, that, oh, sorry, accounting for that shy distance in a sidewalk, because when people walk next to a vertical element, they typically walk like two feet away from whatever the object is. And so if you don't have any setback and you're against a building, then your five foot sidewalk becomes a three foot sidewalk at that point. So.
Thank you. Anyone else here planning on testifying tonight? Oh, good.
Good evening. Kathy Corliss at eight five two eight West Vincent Street in Boise. I don't know if this would be appropriate to ask a couple of questions regarding the clarifications on the zoning.
You're more than welcome to.
To ask them, whether they can be addressed.
It isn't for the public to ask questions from staff or from council, but if council wants to relay or put those questions forward, council certainly has the ability to do that. If not, you always have the opportunity to reach out to staff directly as well.
Okay, just two quick questions is if there's going to be a process that's going to be defined for those projects that have already been approved under the old code and would like to move forward under the new code, because there's projects that are active and projects that aren't is, or a process that's been defined. And second, if change, if further changes are either needed due to inconsistencies, maybe spelling or requested by the city or someone else, will there be a process if that goes in a place before December first defined? Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? And I don't have anyone signed up online, anyone online? Any more additional questions for staff from council?
I'd just point out that if you were elected to City Council, you can ask questions too much.
Thanks, Councilmember Nash. Um, Tim, I guess I would just, I think that you've mentioned it, but in the process of an old application and new application, if somebody submitted an application under the old rules, they will have to be following those old rules all the way through unless they were to pull their application and start over again on December first. Otherwise, they'll be operating out of old rules. Am I understanding that correctly?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. And you know, there's nothing to keep someone from who submitted an application based on the old code, code from starting over and submitting under the new, but they would have to go through that process.
And just to make sure I understood one of your slides earlier, I think you were setting up, I think, council for some expectations of you may not see the effects of this code in real time. We may not have hundreds of more units of affordable housing a year from now, but we might be able to see how many people have been applying for these projects. So while they exist physically a year from now, there's a chance that many of the larger ones probably won't. But we will probably have some sort of idea if people are using or applying for some of these projects.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. And we'll have a, we'll have a, we'll be able to do a lot of critique of the existing ordinance based on the applications that are coming forward. It's just that for anything of any scale, it, this is just the construction timeline. It, it wouldn't be until twenty twenty five that you'd see anything really under construction based on the new code.
And I guess one more question I would have. We are going to be doing some quarterly reviews. We are going to be doing this, you know, year larger review. There is a chance that somewhere along the way, we would see something that would need to be changed. It might be a text edit. It might be something else. And there's a chance that we would go through the normal ordinance process of changing an ordinance. If we did see anything in the meantime, we, I think we hope that that doesn't necessarily happen, but in the event we see something at any point, we could go through the regular ordinance process to make a change. Am I understanding that correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. So our plan, as I said earlier in my presentation, is to come back to council on December first, twenty twenty four with any initial round of edits to the new zoning ordinance. If there was something that was found between now and then that needed to be amended, it would have to follow the amendment process, which would include us submitting an application, us going to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing and discussion and a recommendation, and then back to council. So it would follow that full process.
Great, thank you. Um, if there's no more questions for staff.
Jimmy or Mr. Mayor, I have a question. And a question in terms of the setbacks, can you educate us, Tim, on how the setback would relate to bike lanes, sidewalks? I just want to make sure that that's clarified for the public and also for those who will be building these buildings.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, the, the, we have zoning now in the city, including all of downtown Boise, which has no, no, zero setback requirement on the front side, and it works wonderfully well. And both on the public and private side, we deal with this, and it's absolutely necessary to create an environment that we're envisioning, which is a, you know, a denser pedestrian designed, more urban one. That's what these mixed use zones are about. And that zero setback is is really important to achieving that. As a matter of, you may think five feet isn't a big deal, but imagine all of downtown and set all the buildings back an additional five feet. It, it, it really affects properties in in significant ways in terms of the quality of the design and and whether we get the things that we need on the site, including parking at times, which, you know, that five feet matter. So it isn't an issue around accessibility, you know, the, that's part of the process. And in this new zoning code, we have much more substantial requirements around sidewalks and the width of sidewalks, around the provision of construction of pathways. And, and so there's a much stronger emphasis on pedestrian infrastructure and facilities in this new code. And so it, that's why I say it's not a matter of accessibility. We we're, we're beefing up our requirements around sidewalk width and pathways and designing for pedestrians and cyclists. It's just that this corresponding zero foot setback is really necessary to achieve the environment that we're seeking. It's not all over the city. It's in the MX zones. It's in those places where we're seeking this mixed use.
Thanks, Tim. That is very helpful. Appreciate your expertise.
All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and put this before council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move that we approve Z O A twenty three zero 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 two, which is the zoning ordinance amendment to modify Boise city code title eleven per the P D S staff report and including the additional correction pertaining to the five foot setback as presented by staff tonight.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Is there any discussion?
Quick word on the setback, I guess. Uh, what Tim had to say really resonated with me. I mean, in the MX zone, we're shooting for the dense pedestrian oriented urban space. That's already what a lot of our downtown looks like. And we shouldn't be requiring those buildings to have a five foot yard. That's, you know, that's really the, the upshot of that. We can handle the pedestrian issues with the sidewalk requirements, all of the other pedestrian oriented design. And as Tim said, very briefly, this removes a constraint that creates a lot more flexibility for the people building these buildings. Tim's reference was to parking, but there's all kinds of things that you can do with that additional five feet to achieve the urban density we're looking for.
You have the comments? Councilmember Willetts?
Yep, I'm good. Thank you.
Um, yeah, if I may, just one more comment. Uh, one, it's, it's, I feel like I'm in a little bit of a time warp right now. Like, it seems like we passed this, you know, years and years ago, and it also kind of feels like yesterday. And I know that you all have been working on it every single second, getting all the amendments in there, the minor ones. Getting a, a new platform up for people to see construction projects coming their way. Extremely impressed that you were able to get that done so quick. And it looks like it's super easy for folks to like put in their email address, click a section of a map and get some of those updates. And so I just want to, you know, congratulate and thank staff for all the hard work of getting this passed in the first place. And then the massive amount of work that I'm sure has gone in from the day that we passed it to today. Uh, one other comment, I guess, I would just have, you know, when it, when it comes to those setbacks is it doesn't necessarily mean it's a five foot sidewalk. So I think that there's maybe some confusion there. Um, and these larger MX zones typically are going to have a larger sidewalk as well when it comes to the traffic. And so, you know, these are large sidewalks that meet ADA compliance that are designed to be more accessible. Most of the And so, you know, these are large sidewalks that meet ADA compliance that are designed to be more accessible. Most of the sidewalk requirements now are much wider than they were before. And so, yes, while those buildings will be right up, you know, to the sidewalk, the sidewalks are also larger, you know, putting people further from the street. And, you know, certainly something for us to be looking at, but I'm confident that, um, you know, we, we really looked at the pedestrian friendliness aspect. You know, these really, really well. With that, um, clerk, can you please call the roll?
Stan?
Yes.
Willetts?
Yes.
Bajin?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Annie Keith?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
I'm going to do. I'm going to do one more item, um, and then I might call for a break just to see if everybody, anyone needs anything. Um, so we'll move on to item number two.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm going to recuse myself from item number two. I was lucky to hear it on while I was still on planning and zoning.
All right, got a few more of these. All right. So next up, public hearing, uh, number, item number two, we've got, um, CAR 23-11 Hawkins Companies, a rezone of 1.41 acres from limited office with design review to residential office with design review. And I think we've got David Mosier presenting. David, yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you tonight is a rezone, CR 23-00011. At the Jan, or the July, July 10th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, the applicant requested a conditional use permit for a restaurant associated with the mixed use development and height exception on 1.41 acres located at 2100 West Cootney Street. In addition, a request for a rezone of the property from LO to ROD was also included. The commission approved the conditional use permit and recommended approval of the rezone. And as you can see from the aerial photograph, the property is located at the intersection of Federal Way and Cootney Street and the Federal Way multi-use path is adjacent to the east. This neighborhood contains a mix of commercial, office and residential uses. In addition, the property is located about a quarter mile from Vista Avenue and Boise Avenue, which are commercial corridors to the west and to the east. In summary, the proposed RO zone is compatible and consistent with the comprehensive plan since the property is under 1.5 acres in size and is supported by several goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. In addition, there are also several goals and policy of the comprehensive plan that promote mixed, mixed use, higher density developments along major travel corridors such as Federal Way and Cootney Street with public transit routes. In addition, the development is comprised of a four and five story building ranging in height from 49 feet along Pico, Pico Street and 59 feet along Federal Way. The building is proposed to contain 120 dwelling units with structured parking amenities. The proposed project is similar to what is anticipated to develop in this area. The planning team did receive public comments, both in support and opposition to the project. And as for the public testimony and opposition, their concerns generally involve three main points. Traffic and parking, density and building height. To address these concerns, I would note that the high, that the high density residential is appropriate at this area due to the site's location along Arturo roadway, public transit routes. In addition, the building design reduced the structure to four stories, 49 feet adjacent to the residential homes across Pico Street. The properties also exceeds the required amount of, of parking spaces as per code, which will help reduce, which will reduce the on-street parking demand in the, on the adjacent roadways. In conclusion, the planning is only commission recommends approval. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Um, do we have any questions for staff? All right. With that, I think we'll hear from the applicant. We've got Ethan from Hawkins Companies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll give Dave a second. I kind of sprung it on him at last second. So Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, my name is Ethan Mansfield, uh, representing Hawkins Companies, 855 West Broad Street, Boise, Idaho, 83702. Um, and I'm here tonight to talk about this rezone, uh, from LOD to ROD. It's a reason for 120 multifamily units and roughly 2,000 square feet of commercial space at, um, 2100 West Cootney Street. So as Dave mentioned, uh, here's where it's located, west side of, uh, west corner of Cootney and Federal Way. It's about 1.4 acres. We are seeking a rezone, um, to achieve the height and the density required for this particular development, 120 unit multifamily project. There will be podium parking on a subterranean level and then, uh, put parking on the main, uh, main ground floor. Um, we're proposing a density of roughly 85 units on the ROD zone. Maxes out at 87.1 units. Um, so we're under the maximum. The MX three zone, uh, to which this is slated to be rezoned, um, with the new, uh, modern zoning code allows unlimited density. We're proposing a height of 49 feet. That's, uh, four stories on Pico Street. And then, um, five stories, uh, 59 feet on Federal Way and on Cootney. Um, and I, I should note too, that the MX three zone provides a maximum, as we just heard, a maximum of 70 feet, which would allow six stories. The planning is only commission on July 10th approved the height exception and also approved the conditional use permit for, um, a 2,000 square foot, uh, active retail bakery, coffee shop use, um, on the corner. Um, and the beautiful thing about the comprehensive plan is it kind of contemplates parcels just like this one that have been kind of under invested for the last 70 years or so, um, with this office building that was built in the 1950s. This, uh, comprehensive plan principle adopted in 2016 actually specifically discusses odd shaped parcels and parcels that have experienced disinvestment. We think this just fits it perfectly and we're really proud, um, of this site, of this location. And we're proud to be putting multifamily here. We think this is going to be a great opportunity for 120 families to, to live in Boise, very close to downtown, close to Vista, um, close to all the amenities that, that you know, Boise has to offer in that area. Um, here's the site plan. It's, uh, you know, we don't have to go through it too much, but we're really proud of these walk-up units on Pico Street. We wanted to give Pico Street a residential feel. And, um, I want to, uh, you know, shout out, say thank you to ACHD for allowing us this right in, right out off of Federal Way. It was a deviation from policy, but we think it makes a much, much nicer built environment where pedestrians are actually going to be hanging out, which is that Pico, uh, Cootney intersection. And then over here, um, I don't know exactly where I'm pointing, but, uh, you know, here on this intersection, uh, we're proposing 10 foot detached sidewalks along both the Federal Way and the Cootney side. So that, um, complies with the standards in the modern zoning code that is, uh, slated to be adopted on the first of December. And then we have detached five foot sidewalks along Pico, which is a, um, a local street. So all of that complies with the MX three zoning regs. Um, you know, here's a little snapshot of the proposed elevations. You can see the step down here, uh, to four stories along Pico. And then, uh, the five stories along, um, Federal Way and Cootney. And, um, with that, I'll stand for any questions. Appreciate Dave's work on this and we agree with everything in the staff report.
Council, any questions for the applicant? Uh, just one comment. Thanks for doing the 10 foot sidewalk. Um, I don't think you're required to do that, but it matches what we're wanting to do in the zoning code. And there's going to be a lot of development over there where we hope to see some better pathways on that side of the street. So it's going to match up a lot better than had you not elected to do it. I don't know if we have anyone from the neighborhood association. Doesn't sound like it, not online. And then I don't have anyone sign up to, uh, testify on this one. You can sit down for a second if you want. Anyone here wanting to speak on this one? Anyone online? And if you have nothing else, I'll see if council has any questions for staff. If not, we can.
I just have a comment.
Yep.
Uh, one of the criticisms that I had heard of the MX zones were the height minimums and that it wasn't going to be financially, it wouldn't pencil, um, to do something above three stories in MX three along around the Vista area and Fairview area. So it's good to see that it wasn't the case in this situation and that we were able to get the type of homes that we want in that area.
Great. All right. We'll close the public hearing, put this before council.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
I move approval of CAR 23 11 Hawkins Companies at 2100 West Cootney Way.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Willetts?
Yes.
Bajin?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Annie Keith?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
I think we are going to take a quick break. Um, we'll come back in five minutes and keep rolling. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Councilmember Nashville will show up here in just a second. Uh, third item we have on public hearings is CR 23-08, um, Rock Solid Civil, a rezone approximately 0.95 acres from R1C, single family residential to R2D medium density residential with design review. And David, we got you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, before I start, I just want to note that Dane Hawkins is, or Hoskins is here for the pathways program manager. If you have any additional questions or specific questions regarding pathways later on. The item before, before you tonight is CAR 23-00008 and subdivision 22-00071. On August 7th, 2023, the planning is only commission approved a planning and planned unit development consisting of 10 residential dwelling units comprised of four duplexes and two single family homes with a parking reduction. In addition, the commission recommended approval of a rezone of the property from R1C to R2D and a preliminary plat subdivision containing five buildable lots. As such, the only, only applications before the council tonight is the rezone of the subdivision. The subject property is 0.95 acres in size and located at 9797 West Shields Avenue. And as you can see from the aerial photograph, the subject property in the surrounding area is comprised of residential neighborhood containing detached, single family homes, apartments, manufactured home community. There is an irrigation chat, a canal abutting the property to the south. In summary, the, the rezone to R2D complies with all the required findings as per the development code and is compatible and consistent with the comprehensive plan and the compact land use designation. The rezone is supported by several policies and goals of the comprehensive plan. And as previously stated, the development is comprised of four single story duplexes along the south side of the site, which will take access from Kate Street, which is a new public right of way being constructed with this, uh, with the subdivision. In addition, two single family homes on one parcel will, will be located, uh, abutting Shields Avenue as seen on the site plan here. The subject property is adjacent to a planned multi-use pathway, which is identified within the pathway master plan. There are connection points to the path, planned pathway on, on the adjacent developments to the east and west. During the planning and zoning commission hearing, the applicant did express concerns with the requirement to construct a multi-use pathway adjacent to site and contend that the property to the south is not right of way. To address these concerns, the commission added a condition of approval that required the construction of the pathway unless the applicant can demonstrate that the adjacent right of way is privately owned. According to RGIS map, um, that property that contains the, the, the canal appears to be, um, public property and right of way.
David, sorry to interrupt. Are you talking about the space between the green dotted line and the red solid line?
That is correct. That is a, uh, that is where the canal was located. And it, if you, if you continue off to the west, it does open up and right into Horseshoe Ben Road with no, with no delineation of property. So it's, as far as I can tell, it's, it's, it's right of way.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, similar question. I, I read the planning and zoning transcript like three times and I still didn't completely understand. So maybe I can ask two or three questions. My understanding is there's a little bit of property to the south of the parcel that's an issue here, like between the parcel and the actual like depressed part of the canal. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, um, council member Bajin, that is correct. There, there is, I mean, the pathway would be located on the other, within that canal area. And there is a, a section of that canal that is relatively flat. I think the canal company probably uses it to access the canals as a roadway currently.
Got it. And then my second question was, is the like public property, private property, what kind of property is the canal company's property? They're not public, is that public or private?
Mr. Mayor, council member Bajin, I think it's, the canal company is a privately owned company. So if they did own the property, then it would be privately owned, although I believe they, they've claimed no ownership over this land.
Okay.
They have an easement over it, but they don't actually claim to own it.
And that, this is where I got confused. Who does claim to own it?
At this point, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, at this point in time, nobody actually claims to own it. Uh, the demo, it was sort of demonstrated to, it was put upon the applicant to demonstrate that this is somehow privately owned. And he was doing title searches to see how where this all came, came about and how, how this land had transgressed into where it is today. So that's kind of the, the, the burden of proof was put on them to demonstrate. You know, if you're claiming this is private, privately owned, then show us. And I think he is working towards that, but I haven't heard, I haven't seen anything specific from him yet.
Okay. I guess that this is why it's just maybe never happened to me, um, that there's property within the city of Boise that nobody seems to own. I guess that's what I'm confused about. There's an easement, there's a right of way over it. It's not part of the development application. It's not owned by the connect, like who doing, who owns it? And the answer could be, we don't know. I mean, that does happen, but.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, at this point, we, we don't know. Um, it's, it's, it's basically sort of like the roadway. There are, RGIS doesn't indicate anybody, you know, owns it. It's owned in public. And it's not taxed us. And there, and as such, nobody gets paid tax, nobody gets taxed for it.
Okay. Okay. Awesome. Thank you. I think I may have some questions after, at the end of this, about how to deal with this pathway situation, but that, that's helpful. Thank you.
Well, on, on that note, I would just, uh, conclude that the planning and zoning commission recommends approval of the rezone and subdivision. Thank you.
Thanks, David. We were pretty close to being there anyway. Any other, um, questions we have for staff?
Mr. Mayor, oh, I have a question. I, uh, um, so I guess I'm maybe sensitive to, I, you know, I feel like we've heard recently, I'm not necessarily in the city Boise, but, um, that conditions are not implemented in a timely manner. And so I see, for example, like the needs to be the path, the sidewalk, things like that. The sidewalk actually doesn't have um, like a timestamp on it and the, the multi-use path has to be done by, um, recording of the final plat. Do we experience, have, have you experienced situations where you know, something changes by the time they get to that final plat and then therefore the path is never built at all? Or I mean, is there any way to make it more specific with those conditional requirements on, um, like timeliness?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess with the conditions, you could always put some sort of quantifier on it that say, you know, if you, in order to proceed forward, then you'll have to construct such as prior issuance of the or recording of the final plat, then you'll need to do the following, such as build the pathway. So then if the condition is read as such, then the city engineer and the council won't, or the city clerk won't sign the plat until that is complete. Or you can attach it, the conditions would tie them to say certificate of occupancy. So before you gain certificate or the CFO, then you'll need to complete said things such as landscaping, things of that nature. The sidewalks will be required as part of the subdivision plat. So before the plaque gets signed off, those improvements will have to be installed. So that's what we try to do is we try to attach those, uh, those type of things to our conditions that say before this happens, then we need, we need X before, you know, we need this done before the following thing happens. And we tried to do that, uh, for most conditions.
Thanks, Dave.
Any other questions for staff? Right here, and then I'm going to call the applicant. I think we have Derek Kerner from Rock Solid.
But Jim Jewett might be online.
Okay, yeah. Anyone from Rock Solid?
I have Jim Jewett online.
Great. Jim, are you there? And Jim, uh, from Rock Solid, if you are there, it's your time to present.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, yeah, this is the applicant, uh, James Jewett, uh, 4123 West Garnet Street in Boise. Excuse me. Um, I, I want to thank David for, uh, all the work he's helped me through with his plat and, uh, his for his presentation tonight. We are in agreements with all of staff comments and planning and zoning, uh, comments and their approval. I will say that on the pathway, we are in favor of pathways and we're in favor of a pathway in this location. There, there is a question of ownership and that's still in the process. I would gladly answer any questions the council may have. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, council member Bajin.
Um, yeah, one question for you, sir. As I understood it, your concern wasn't so much with the pathway as. we to maintenance, you know, kind of the limbo period that could last a very long time until there are connections on either side. Is that still a concern or have you figured out a way to address that? Or do you have any thoughts for us on that issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. And that's a fundamental statement I made at planning and zoning is building a pathway that doesn't connect to any connection point now without any known timeframe when those connections were made. How would anybody maintain that? And it, to me, it could deteriorate where you're just going to replace it by the time. So I offered to do trust fund or bond or whatever cash method to fund my portion of it. Once the city worked out a license agreement and this ownership issue on the entire pathway and got it built. That was my only suggestion, and that's a fundamental. I would have it here or anywhere else. I am all in favor of pathways. It's just a matter of fundamentals of how I get built.
Understood. Thank you very much, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question for councillor staff.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, do we have any type of capacity or to accept like cash in lieu of building the path or any type of fee we assess for a particular path or bonding like was recommended? Has that have been a historical practice? Is that something we?
You know, I would put that back in front of staff. We do have our pathways plan manager and David here as well.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do not think we currently have a mechanism for that in place for pathways. I would I would refer to to Dane if there if I'm wrong on that, but that's my understanding.
You know, following up on that, and Dane, maybe you can speak to this if you would. My recollection is that we approved the development on Bogart along the same stretch of canal. Might have been this year, might have been twenty twenty-two, and there is a stretch that's already being built by that developer. It may be under construction right now. So there is another section that's being built or or is being planned to be built as we speak. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, council, yes, there is a development directly to the east of this property where that pathway is being built. They don't connect. I can say that this is a priority pathway for us, and we are sort of actively pursuing the required master agreements and license agreements. So this is one that's moving, and I I do not anticipate this being a section that would languish.
And maybe just one follow-up. I believe in the pathways master plan, this also was one of our was one of our low-hanging fruit priority projects as well. So this is one that we thought we actually had the ability to implement at a quicker speed.
Yes, sir. I believe so.
Thank you. Um, I think we still have the applicant along. Were there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, Jim, don't go too far. We'll call you back up again if we need to. Do we have the Northwest Neighborhood Association? I don't think they're here. Are they online? Right, no one from the Northwest Neighborhood Association. Do we have? I don't have anyone written down here. Anyone in the room planning on testifying on this? Anyone online? All right, no one in here, no one online. Last chance for questions for for staff or questions for the developer. All right, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I'll do these separately. I move approval of C R twenty-three zero 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 eight Rock Solid Civil at ninety-seven ninety-seven West Shields Avenue. According to the conditions that were presented.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Here none. Quickly, please call the roll.
Stead.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And David, did you say that we are only hearing the rezone, not the subdivision? Or we?
They're both before you tonight.
There. That's what I thought. For some reason, I thought you'd said that we weren't hearing the subdivision. So we do have one more.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of S U B twenty-two zero zero seven one.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion on this one? Um, I would just note that I certainly understand the concern, you know, from the developer of putting in a piece of pathway that we don't know when it's going to connect. We did require a really significant stretch of that pathway going in over there off of Bogart. And this is one of our pathways that were identified as as a low-hanging fruit, easier to to tackle with the support of the canal company than some of the other ones. And so I do think it makes a lot of sense to get these in. I think there's actually some other pieces of property that we've had developments on there that we approved before the pathways master plan was in place, but we did protect the easement on those sections as well. So we sort of have a few pieces of the puzzle coming together on this one. And I certainly appreciate the developer's understanding as we work through that process.
Mr. Mayor, can I add something to that in that same regard? I mean, because we hear that all the time, especially when it comes to sidewalks, like piecemealing sidewalks together. Why build a sidewalk on a parcel if there's no sidewalk next to it? But this is the way that development gets done well in a city. It might take a generation, but I mean, think of the Boise Green Belt. That's not something we didn't just have twenty-two miles of green belt to build a path on right-of-way. It really comes together piece by piece. But, you know, but that's how we get it done. And, you know, years down the line, it'll it'll all come together and make sense. So I appreciate the understanding from the developer on that, too.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember Sted. If there's no other comments, clerk, we go ahead and call the roll.
Stan.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, now we've got our last but not least item, item number four. An appeal of P U D twenty-three dash ten Southwest Ada County Alliance, an appeal of the approval of planning and zoning commission's approval of a conditional use permit for a planned residential development of one hundred and thirty-eight multifamily units and a height exemption. We also have a C R twenty-three Rodney Evans and Partners, a rezone of approximately three point five acres from R one A, single-family residential to R three D, multifamily residential. And this is both an appeal and it's actually approval for a rezone as well. With testimony tonight, usually if there was an appeal, we would only be taking parties of record. Since it's actually an appeal and a rezone, we will be taking parties of record and anyone else who's interested in testifying, but making two different motions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Before we get started, I'm going to have to recuse from this side for the same reason. It's an appeal to a decision that I was a part of on planning and zoning.
Right. Thank you, Councilmember Sted. Okay, and with that, I think we've got the first presentation from from staff. We got Sabrina tonight. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is C R twenty-three dash nine and the appeal of P U D twenty-three dash ten. On August fourteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of a rezone of the subject property located at one one eight eight zero West Overland Road from R one A to R three D. They also approved the associated planned residential development comprised of one hundred and thirty-eight multifamily units and a height exception. Public opposition was received regarding the applications and all written comments and public testimony is included in your packets. The commission found the rezone to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, which design makes the site as commercial. R three D isn't allowed zone in the commercial land use, and the subject property is well-suited for higher-density residential development as it will provide a transition between the adjacent single-family homes and the nearby office and commercial uses. The commission found the R three D zone to be the most appropriate for the site as it will support infill development in an area with access to transit, employment opportunities and neighborhood services. The commission also found the associated development proposal, which is comprised of two four-story apartment buildings containing a total of one hundred and thirty-eight units to be consistent with the approval criteria for a P U D and a height exception. On August twenty-fourth, the Southwest Ada County Alliance appealed the approval of the P U D and the height exception based on the grounds for appeal detailed in your packets and summarized on this slide. Specifically, the appeal raises concerns regarding the provision of adequate pedestrian and bicycle connections, preservation of natural features on the site, provision of public benefits, compatibility with the neighborhood, adverse impacts on other properties and compliance with the comprehensive plan. The app also contends that the commission erred by not requiring a mixed-use development in this location. A memo was also received from one additional party of record expressing concern regarding floodplain impacts is detailed in your packets. During their deliberations, the commission did express some desire for a mixed-use development in this location. However, they ultimately found that the code did not require mixed use and the proposed residential development was compatible with the other residential office and commercial uses in the area and was in compliance with the approval criteria for a P U D. The commission also found that the requested height exception was necessary for the development to comply with the floodplain development standards and would have minimal visual impact on neighboring properties due to the topography of the site and the amount of separation between the apartments and the adjacent single-family homes. The commission found that the sidewalks internal to the site and the multi-use path along Overland Road provided adequate pedestrian and bicycle connections for the development. Additionally, the applicant's proposal to construct a multi-use pathway along Overland Road, provide enhanced landscaping along Five Mile Creek and construct a new bus stop on the subject property will preserve natural features and provide public benefits. The commission found the site was large enough to accommodate the proposed use as the site design provides all required setbacks, parking, landscaping and other features required by the code. Additionally, all stormwater runoff will be collected on site and infiltrated into the ground in order to support aquifer recharge and prevent adverse impacts on properties in the area that utilize wells. Although the app's memo identifies specific goals of the comprehensive plan, which they believe the proposed development is in conflict with, there are also many goals and policies which support the proposed use as detailed in your packets. The commission found the development to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan's overall vision, which encourages infill development and increased residential density in areas with existing access to transient services. The commission acknowledged concerns regarding potential floodplain impacts of the development. However, the plans submitted by the applicant do indicate that all improvements will be located outside of the floodway. Additionally, the commission's approval of the application included a condition which requires the applicant to obtain approval of a separate floodplain development permit prior to the submittal of construction permits. In conclusion, the commission recommends approval of the rezone and the planning team recommends denial of the appeal, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay, here none. We'll go ahead and hear from the appellant first. Thank you, Sabrina. Marissa Keith from Southwest Southwest Ada County Alliance Neighborhood Association. You can go ahead when you're ready.
Um, Sabrina, did you get my little presentation that I emailed to you? Uh, like around six, I have it, can you upload it?
Marissa, is ten minutes enough for you? Let's try for ten minutes. And you'll have rebuttal as well.
Okay, yeah. Um, all right. So good evening, council members. My name's Marissa Keith. I'm the I'm at thirty-two seventy-nine South Cloverdale in Boise, and I'm the president of the Southwest Ada County Alliance Neighborhood Association. So just a little background, our N A runs from Maple Grove, just pat just west of Cloverdale between the freeway and Columbia Road, and we cover both the city and Ada County up to Boise's area of impact, the edge of the area of impact. So the mission of our neighborhood association is for safe and compatible growth within Southwest Boise. And just a little background on me, I've been the Neighborhood Association president for five years. I have a background in social work, working primarily between developmental disabilities and child protection. And I currently provide support for Idaho's Safe Routes to Schools program. I did sit on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the zoning rewrites for both the city and the county and was part of the Boise Pathways Work Group. So when I try, when I look at projects, I try to look through a lens of making them better, both for the residents that will someday live there and as well as how the projects might make the Southwest community a better place to live. And so this first slide, I just wanted to give an kind of overview of where we're talking here. If you see the circle on the left, that's the Eagle Exit. The one on the right is the Coal Road Exit, and that yellow line there is the Meridian and Boise City Limits. So we're very close to city limits here. The project there is that pink area next to the yellow line there. So this area is primarily residential, like much of the Southwest area is. We do have the low-stress bike network there in yellow. There is a current bus stop there at the corner. It's the triangle there, the corner of Overland and Cloverdale. And there is a walking path that is on the south side of Overland that goes to the back of the Fred Myers and then a little bit on the north side, which then becomes a public street. And crosswalks are identified there in yellow, mostly about a mile apart. And so the Southwest Boise development pattern has often been referred to death by a thousand cuts planning method. So we have a lot of small individual projects brought forth kind of one by one that don't have connectivity or continuity between them. And so by themselves, they are never big enough to trigger larger infrastructure requirements. But as these small projects have added up over time, we now have problems like jam-packed two-lane roads with no sidewalks, pedestrian crossings that are mile apart, very limited commercial development to the point where there are some places you can go nearly three miles and see nothing but houses. And the character of the Southwest is now often described as individual subdivisions cut off from one another by vinyl fences, but each with their own private tot lot or park that's strictly controlled by the H O A. So at Oh, is there? And so at first glance, this P U D may look like it ticks all the boxes for the type of development that we want in Boise. However, after taking another look, it's really is the type of P U D that some on the zoning rewrite committee expressed a lot of frustration about. So this development here, it really only brings more house tops and traffic to Southwest Boise and does not include elements that make our community better overall. This project is also following the death of a thousand cuts pattern. This is where we are currently here. Oh, this one here, this is where we started. So this was a year ago. The original project included both sections of this property all the way to Lizazo, and it had multiple apartment complexes. And here's where we are now with only the one side of this parcel that is uh, under consideration for tonight. But on Thursday, we will go to a neighborhood meeting to discuss this by the same developer, which is a townhouse development that will come sometime next year. So ideally, it would have been great if these two parcels had come before you as one package, but that's not what happened. So we can only focus on this one here. I'm going to start off with what I do like about this development, but which does not quite live up to the applicability part of providing certain intended benefits to the public through creative design. So I am very much into bike pedestrian infrastructure. So the inclusion of the one hundred and thirty-eight bike parking spaces for future residents is great. And this development is very near the low-stress bike network, which runs along Canvas, and that runs directly next to the freeway. And so hopefully, the residents will be able to take advantage of that and ride their bikes to downtown Boise once in a while. And there are also additional bike racks on the site that, according to the developer, will be available to residents, guests and the general public. And while I agree that residents and guests will be using those bike racks, I can't see that the general public just parking a bike at a random apartment complex that they have no connection to. So including the ten-foot pathway and street trees along Overland is always something that I will support on any archery or collector. And however, this pathway does not fill a sidewalk gap for us. There is a complete and connected sidewalk along this entire front edge. And despite the developers' claim that a ten-foot sidewalk will allow bicyclists to avoid riding in traffic on Overland, almost every bike rider that we see out there already uses a sidewalk and does not ride in the street. So at the time of this application, the ten-foot pathways were not the policy at the Highway District, but they were the will of the commission. And we do have several other projects out in Southwest Boise that will include these ten-foot pathways. It is now the policy at the Highway District, though. So there's much, there's been much back and forth between about Five Mile Creek and the floodway boundaries and whether this project complies with the purpose of the P U D about preserving natural features. And so this land is restricted somewhat in its development because of the floodway. And so this land is restricted somewhat in its development because of the floodway. The consideration of the natural features is being done mostly because of the floodway and because the property lines in line ends well before you actually could get to the creek from this apartment building. The neighbors to the north, their property line extends over the creek onto the bank of the side of this apartment building. So the natural features are not being preserved by the PUD so much as the restrictions of the floodplain and the property lines. And almost all the, the land that is not restricted by the floodway or setback requirement is either taken up by buildings or the parking lot, the very large parking lot, which is the the dark area in this picture, that is the parking lot, the, the light things down there that are near Overland are the buildings. So, um, there's also been some concern because some pictures in the file have shown that some of these parking spots actually encroach into the floodway. Now, the large parking lot, which covers a majority of the land, is needed to support the desired density of this development. The need for such a large parking lot has so far prevented the developer from considering the pathway along Five Mile Creek, which they discussed when this project, the first go-around, when it was much larger and covered both parcels. Um, additionally, the six-foot privacy fence that what is in the plans for between the parking lot and the creek really dismisses any argument that the natural riparian area is being incorporated into the design of the project because it will be blocked from the view of the people that live here. And the developer discusses in his appeal response that there are no
Marissa, can I ask you a question really quick? We can pause the clock while we do. You're saying that you would not want the privacy fence between the development and the creek. You would, you're saying you would rather have that be left open?
Our, um,
Or you're just saying that it doesn't
Comprehensive plan for Southwest Boise calls for open fencing to to enhance the rural characteristics of our area and to be able to see natural features such as this.
Okay. You've got about a minute and twenty-five left. I just want to see if that's enough time or I'm willing to extend a little bit if you think you need to come. Okay, we're gonna give you two more minutes after this.
Um, so the developer discussed in his appeal that there was no network of trails along this part of Five Mile Creek, and this is entirely true. On the opposite side of, of Overland, you will see that there is a paved walkway along the creek. It's constantly in use by Southwest residents, although it is short. Mostly they're using it to either walk their dog, go to Fred Meyer's or just get away from Overland, which potentially someday could be a seven-lane road. Depending on how, how the highway district goes. The developers argued that the ten-foot pathway will will be the start of a lower-stress bike ped trail that can be expanded as future trail connections become available. However, the ten-foot pathways are really not intended just to be trails there to take the place of the on-street bike lanes and to be a sidewalk at the same time. So they are really for both leisure and active transportation purposes. So the, a low-stress bike ped trail would be more like the walkway that is along Five Mile Creek there that goes to the back of Fred Meyer, which they could incorporate into this development as well. So neighbors have expressed concern with the strictly residential nature of this project as well as the height. This section is listed on the future land map as commercial and while there are residential zones within the commercial land use designation, I believe that the people were hoping for more of a mixed-use development, kind of like what was portrayed during the zoning rewrite hearings, which was like a mixed-use walkable community. However, since the new code does not take effect for the, another two and a half weeks, I mean, short of denying the project and then asking them to come back to see one, which then will turn into a MX one. We're at the mercy of the old code right now. So the neighborhood association would like to see the possibility of a step back on the fourth story for privacy for those neighbors to the north, to the north. Uh, it would hope that during the winter months, those trees will be bare. They will not have leaves and so that privacy will be an issue there. And the step back would help the building look less blocky and massive compared to the much lower in height rest of the neighborhood. And so just in summary, we, these are the things that are the NA would like. I know the neighbors want other things besides this and more, but we would like to see that walking path along the Five Mile Creek with a public easement to ensure future public work, public use, open fencing along Five Mile Creek, the bus stop, which is already located at the intersection of Overland and Cloverdale. The last we heard, there was talks with Valley Regional Transit, but no, no set in stone plans yet. So we would like that move a little bit closer to this development and actually have a bus shelter there to encourage people to use it. And the fourth story step back, uh, micropath connections between this development on the north, on the east and the west to Overland. Currently, there's the only access to Overland will be the main driveway and there is room that they could have some micropath connections just for walkability purposes. Um, and then yeah, alternatively, if, if none of this looks acceptable, um, we would ask that you deny the rezon and the PUD.
You nailed it on your timing. Um, good presentation, Marissa. Any questions for neighborhood association?
Mr. Mayor. Marissa, I hear you loud and clear on the piecemeal development, private parks, HOAs, all those problems. And I wonder, you're also absolutely right that we're going to consider this application and not the one that's coming in the future, but in a different universe where you were allowed to share your thoughts on this application in light of what's coming in next to it. What would you share with us?
So originally, when I saw this, I was a little bit distracted by the potential pathway and the ten-foot sidewalks and street trees because like that's kind of my passion is bike competitive infrastructure. Um, and then the more I heard neighbors like they're like, you need to take a look at this and it's not going next to me. So I think that makes a huge difference. It's going a mile down the road. But I do understand their concerns with privacy. This has been a very rural area, even though it is next to Overland Road, which is not rural in nature at all. I am I would like to see just more ability for the public to use this area. We have the ten-foot pathway in the front, which would be required anyhow, or ACHD would put it in if they ever redid Overland. But we get these, these developments where they do not add to connectivity. It will add a lot of cars and I would just like to see more development that is a true benefit to the community. Yes, it will bring houses, but there has to be something more than that in an area where you have no grid, you have archerial roads are your way to get around. There's no, you know, these subdivisions, they might be half a mile wide, but they might not connect to, you know, they might, there might be no connection within that mile block. So you really are very stuck out there.
Any other questions for the neighborhood association?
Mr. Mayor.
Um, go ahead, Councilmember Wels.
Uh, Marissa, can you talk to us about any concerns that you might have with the number of parking spots? Because it's high density and then, and then, and given the fact that there are no routes within five miles of public transportation and VRT has already cut routes into South Boise number, excuse me, into West Boise. Have, has that come up in your, in your neighborhood association at all?
And the parking issue is always brought up. VRT did not cut this stop, although I, someone said it was on the chopping block. They did decide to keep it. Although the public transit is not well-used out there because I think people have kind of this fear that if you, the bus runs so infrequently, like you have to have a very set schedule and you can't have an emergency come up there where you have to get home right away. So the bus transit is probably underutilized from where it could be. Uh, the parking, this so this development by itself, they could ask for a parking reduction because they are in a transit line, a transit corridor, but they did not. I think the issue here is that while we would like to hope that some of these people will be riding their bikes and taking the bus every day to downtown Boise, that is not going to be the case in Southwest Boise because if you do not have a car, you are stuck. And so they will, if they are not able to park within that parking lot, they will have to walk down Overland Road to the neighborhood and park on a public street, which, you know, is a public street, you're allowed to park there. But that is quite a distance from where they are. There is another business, there's a business next door. It's a, it's called the Tech Ball and there's like a nail spa in there too. And they actually had to add parking into their parking lot because they did not have enough parking. And so there have been concerns from those businesses that people might try to park in their lot.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions for the neighborhood association, I'm going to go ahead and bring up the developer. I think we've got Ben Semple for Rodney Evans and Partners. Thanks, Marissa. And Ben, we gave them twelve minutes. We'll give you the same amount of time. Um, you don't have to use all of it if you don't want to though.
Mr. Mayor, that sounds great. Thank you very much. Uh, Ben Semple with Rodney Evans and Partners, fourteen fifty West Bannock Street, Boise, Idaho, eight-three-seven-zero-two. Yeah, I, I think first and foremost, um, I just want to reiterate that we are in agreement with the conditions and the conditions of approval and all of the staff report. And, uh, I want to thank Sabrina for her presentation as well as a lot of the work that's gone in and getting us to where we are. You know, you're going to hear a lot about traffic and parking. I want to reiterate, this project also provides one hundred sixty-six parking stalls and Boise City Code would require one hundred fifty-nine parking stalls. So this is overparked. It also provides one hundred thirty-eight inside bike storage stalls. So one bike stall per unit. This is a mix of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. There's twenty studio units. There's seventy-three one-bedroom units and there's forty-five two-bedroom units. So this is an one hundred and thirty-eight, two- or three-bedroom apartments with multiple, you know, lots of families or, or people like that. You know, discussing public transit, you know, trying to add units that take advantage of public transit is always necessary in order to encourage ridership. If there's not the encouragement of using a bus, then people aren't going to ride a bus. Um, I know it's kind of a chicken and the egg kind of thing. But, you know, there's, the, the demographics are changing where when you're looking for an affordable place to live in Boise, owning a car a lot of times doesn't also coincide with being able to afford to live somewhere. So having access to a bus route, which this does, the developer is rebuilding the bus stop directly at the entrance to this project. So that will allow residents to easily access the public route. It's also approximately a mile to Five Mile and Overland. It's a neighborhood activity center that has Fred Meyer for grocery shopping. It has multiple other services. It does retail, commercial, uh, a lot of other stuff that people can ride a bike to or walk down a sidewalk to. The ten-foot multi-use pathway is a requirement of the code right now for this project because this is identified as a pathway section that needs to be improved, not because ACHD is asking us to. Yes, along arterial roadways with a new code, the standard is for a ten-foot wide sidewalk, but this being current, this is required to do the multi-use pathway with, that does provide the ability for bicyclists and pedestrians to use a sidewalk that's currently, I believe, five foot wide attached on Overland. There may be a little bit of additional stamped concrete out there that, that widens it some. There's also a dedicated bike lane. Whether people use it or not, that's their prerogative. But having a ten-foot wide multi-use pathway is definitely going to be much more comfortable for bicyclists and pedestrians to use that. The developer did have some conversations about trying to provide a secondary pathway that's closer to Five Mile Creek. This is within the floodway along the northern edge here as well as floodplain. Some construction issues come up with building a pathway within a floodway. You can't put a hard surface in a pathway or in a floodway, so it becomes a natural surface. And then if that floods intermittently because of the condition of a floodway, it becomes non-ADA accessible and then the general public, while, you know, but the majority of people may be able to use it, it doesn't become something that lots of public can use all the time because it, it restricts ADA accessibility. This isn't a surface that is fully accessible to everyone in the public. The R3 zone again is an allowable zone within the commercial land use. This is zoned R1B right now. So even with the conversion, it doesn't change the zoning. It, the, the land use is commercial, the zoning is not commercial. So right now it's a residential zone. We're asking for a residential zone to build apartments here. While this was initially one project that did include the vacant eastern parcel, that was communicated to us through staff and through our conversations with them that that is a suburban land use, which only supports up to R1C. And so in going through the preliminary look at this, it was going to ask for a comprehensive plan amendment, which we were told was not supportable by the city. So the applicant, my client withdrew the applications and came back with this parcel, knowing that it fulfilled what they are looking to do, which is to build some attainable housing for people within this area of the city of Boise, knowing that they were going to come back and figure out what they could do within an R1C zone eventually on the eastern parcel and further creating more of a transition from single-family residential that's to the north into this parcel. Looking at the mixed use, you know, during our planning and zoning hearing, there's a lot of discussion that surrounded that. The Five Mile Creek and the canal interchanges that occur right at the western edge of this effectively cut off any cross-connection ability to the west as well as to the north. So the only ability to create a cross-access is to the east, which is again a suburban land use and a residential zone would be the densest or the most high-intensity use there. Introducing a commercial or retail use within the bottom of a, a residential building here seems a little counterintuitive to what the neighbors are concerned about with traffic and parking in that it would drive no pun intended, other traffic to this site that is not associated with the residential development here. Especially when there was commercial and retail availability, again, less than a mile away to the east as well as commercial zoning and land uses immediately to the west at Cloverdale and Overland. Uh, we feel it wouldn't be appropriate here and by taking away units for residential use, it also ends up inadvertently driving up the cost of residential, the residential units themselves. Kind of the same line of thought for the parking. Um, there's been studies recently that show that surface parking spots add about five thousand dollars per unit per spot. So for every spot you're adding, which is also it's, if you're looking at a nine by eighteen, you know, you're sixty-some, almost seventy square feet of a use there, sorry, it's a hundred and sixty-some square feet. You're taking that away directly from the ability to build a, a unit or provides for additional residential square footage. Again, that cost, whether good, bad or indifferent, gets passed on to the end user. So it drives up the cost of housing. The pedestrian bike safety, I know there are some concerns that will be brought up in looking at the comment letters that came from the various agencies within the city of Boise. Four streetlights will be required with this project. One on the east end, one on the west end and two intermittently of this project, which vastly improves the safety, the night safety along this stretch of Overland Road. Um, especially when you consider the ten-foot multi-use pathway, again, that is separated from the curb of Overland by an eight-foot planter strip with class-two street trees meeting all the requirements of the, the city of Boise code. Um, let's see. Sorry, I'm just trying to touch on as many of these items as I can. Uh, the fencing that is proposed right now was in a direct response to neighbor concerns about privacy. The developer is absolutely open to an open vision fence along the north side. He'd actually prefer that. As was stated, the property actually stops primarily on the south side of Five Mile Creek. So the view of the neighbors from the north isn't impeded, whether this is privacy fence or not. The developer is really just concerned about safety of residents on this project and as well as trying to keep people from going into the creek. Whether that's for recreation or otherwise, it's better to keep people away from an active flowing, what is considered an irrigation drainage. It is an active creek that flows year-round as well. The, the landscape design that was completed with this includes a, a variety of trees, both deciduous and evergreen. Um, we primarily looked at incorporating those trees in the gaps that exist along the creek there. Both the Parks Department and the Forestry Department. Both the Parks Department and the Forestry Department did look at the plan. They really like the mix of these plants that are being proposed along here. And with the addition of some evergreen trees, which they are primarily deciduous that exist there now, they're upwards of 50 to 60 feet tall or greater. I can see some of the concern for the winter months. Most people aren't outside in their yards in the winter months. And so I, I don't see an issue with this apartment project being approximately 265 feet away from single-family residential to the north. Especially when you consider the additional landscaping that will be installed there. The usable space is on the west end of this property. There's a, a larger open lawn space that will be kind of open passive recreation. There's also a dog park amenity that's on this site to allow for the residents to take their pets out. We're looking at some additional pathways, some micro path connections around the west end of the building into the interior sidewalks here. As well as to the amenity space that is on the first floor of the western building that includes a fitness center as well as some other community space for the residents of the project to use. Based on the staff report, they, they saw the amenities that were provided as being adequate for, for this type and size of development. And we're really looking forward to, my clients really looking forward to building another project in Boise. They are in the Boise market. They've had, have a couple of their projects here and looking at a couple more. And so with that, I would stand for any additional questions to me, how?
Any questions for the applicant? Councilmember Bajit?
Mr. Mayor, just one. I didn't totally track everything you had to say about the privacy fence. I started taking notes and I stopped listening to what you said. And so I only got the first half of it, which was your, your client doesn't really want it. But then later you were saying something about the need to keep people out of the creek either recreationally or otherwise. So is it that your client doesn't want a privacy fence, but is open to other fencing? Or just, I guess, just tell me again what you said a moment ago.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bajit. Yeah. So the privacy fence was in, was proposed because of neighbor concerns of privacy. My client does want a fence there. They are open to an open vision fence that provides and, and allows for that view to the creek from this side. They really were just trying to make sure that neighbors weren't concerned about privacy. And so for safety for their residents, as well as security, they'd like to have a fence there, obviously complying with any floodplain and floodway ordinance.
Got it. And then is the privacy fence a condition right now? Or is it just something that's in the design?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bajit, it's just part of the design. Again, typically these projects will fence their perimeter for security and safety reasons. And when you're looking at adjacent to other homes, you look at privacy fence because that's what a lot of people like to have.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
I just wanted to double check with respect to the bus stop that that is happening. There was a, a comment earlier as if that was potentially happening, but there's no definitive that it is happening. Is it, are you saying today is actually being built?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Haney Keith, yes. VRT, we've had discussions with them. I believe it's also a condition of approval in the staff report. I believe the condition right now is to build the pad and VRT is looking at designs for a structure or enclosure that would go in there in the future based on ridership. But yes, the bus stop will go in as part of this project.
Mr. Mayor, one more question. Just with respect to the prior testimony on number five, which I can see, I don't know if you can see, but the micro path connection from Overland to the interior of the site. Do you have a response or reaction to that request?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Haney Keith, yes. So there's two pathway connections at the entrance of this project. You know, they consist of sidewalks that would lead from the 10-foot multi-use pathway into the project. The east end has a little bit of ability to provide another connection and the west end could bring a sidewalk from the sidewalk on Overland around the west end of that project, really just trying to maintain the landscape area on that west end as more of a green space and, you know, use for the residents there. But, you know, there's room for it that could get around there. So it would be considered if that's the direction of the council.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
But I, I need clarification because I understand that the bus stop, the, the structure of a stop may be there, but there's no routes there right now. I want, I want clarification from you on that because I'm on the VRT website right now and there's no, there's no availability to, to use that bus stop, even if it was constructed. Could you talk us through that a little bit?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, well, let's, there is a bus route on Overland. There's a bus stop at the corner of Overland and Cloverdale right now. In our conversations with VRT, they wanted us to move that to the frontage of this project. I don't, or add another one in front of this project. I don't, it's one of the two. It will be built in front here, but my understanding and everything that I've seen is that there is a bus route that runs on Overland, both, both east and west that this sits on.
Thank you. Um, Ben, I won't dicker about this, but I'm on the website right now and I've typed it in and there's no way to get there. You have to walk, you have to walk an hour to the next, to the nearest bus stop for a route. So I think, I think Director Clay probably already left, but I, I'm not seeing it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Willetts, I, I guess that's news to me because every map I've looked at shows a bus stop at that corner. And in my conversations with the RT staff, they, we had multiple conversations about this location of a bus stop. And there's another one on the south side of Overland at Cloverdale as well.
And Councilmember Willetts, that may be a question we can ask of staff too. Staff, I don't know if we, in our conversations, do we know if we do have, it's my understanding that we do have a bus route on Overland.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's my understanding as well. I'm not sure if Councilmember Willetts is looking at current times. If so, it may just be an issue of whether that bus route is running at this time of night. And that's the only.
And I guess, I guess what I'm hearing as well is that the conversations with VRT, I do think that there is a bus route there, but whether there's a bus route there or not, they want to have a bus stop there. So that there could be enhanced about bus routes there in the future regardless.
So that's, that's my understanding. And my understanding is there is a bus route. I think Councilmember Nash had that pulled up too.
Councilmember Willetts, did you have another follow-up?
No.
Um, I guess a couple of questions maybe that I've got here, just to make sure that I understand. I also was kind of stuck on the privacy fence. Privacy fence to me is like it's six feet tall and I can't see over the top of it if I'm standing like in a yard. Is that what we're talking about? A privacy fence? Are we talking about an even larger enhanced?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, no, it would be your standard six foot, whether that's wood or vinyl or some sort of other material that would be constructed that is solid that you can't see through.
And then my understanding of many aspects of that area, or at least of that creek, because I've walked and ridden on some different spots, is that there's also trees along the Five Mile Creek that you will be leaving in place because it's sort of that wetlands overflow kind of flood zone.
Mr. Mayor, yes, there's a large rip, riparian area and a lot of vegetation along the creek there. And that is specifically being left in, in place and will be retained and protected during the entire construction and for the, you know, future forever.
Great. And then I guess my, my final question goes back to the, the path along Five Mile Creek. And to make sure that I kind of understand what you're saying, because it's in a flood zone, it makes it hard to pave. But you could put in a dirt path there or a compacted gravel path. I think that there's actually a similar compacted gravel path on Five Mile Creek. Maybe, I don't know, quarter mile to the east or so. But you're saying that that would have maybe some ADA compliance. Are you also saying that there's issues with it? There's not enough space for it? Or is it just the construction of it isn't going to be up to what you think the city would require?
Mr. Mayor, yeah. I mean, our concern is that we're creating a pathway that isn't usable by everybody. And that the 10-foot multi-use pathway was indicated as required regardless if we had a pathway, we had looked at, could we put a pathway along the north side, along the creek and not the pathway along Overland? And when it became apparent, along with the additional right of way dedication from ACHD that the pathway on the north and the 10-foot pathway would, would not be exclusive of each other that.
Yeah, maybe let me ask just maybe a slightly different way. I, I, but I think, but that is helpful. So are you saying that there, there would be room for a dirt path behind that stretch? But the big, but the concern is that it wouldn't be ADA compliant or it wouldn't be accessible, but there is actually room to put that within your current development that you've got proposed.
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is, yeah, we've got a, a setback requirement there. And, you know, assuming we can get all of the required stakeholders and the floodplain person at the city to sign off on it. Yeah. I mean, that's definitely something that can be explored.
Yeah. That's all the questions. I've got any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Ben, in that same vein, I, I understand the concerns around ADA compliance. Have you expressed any concerns about the public easement portion of that request?
Sir Mayor, Councilmember Nash, yeah, I guess we hadn't looked at how to install a public easement there to ensure that it has the required width and doesn't impact, you know, some of the required parking that falls outside of the floodway. Now, there was a comment about parking being in the floodway and that is not the case, but yeah, I mean, it's, we can figure it out if, if it needs to be public and it's a public easement, as long as it doesn't impact the other improvements that are required, then it would be, you know, entertained for sure.
Great. And I think we'll go ahead and move into comments from the public. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
I've got, uh, maybe three people signed up. Um, on my sheet here, I have Carl Larson. Maybe that's something different. Carl Larson here or online. Nope. All right. Um, let's try Vince Maggio. Thanks Vince. And when you come up, you've got three minutes. And if you just wouldn't mind saying your, your first and last name and your address, that'd be great.
Vince Maggio, uh, 12549 West Castlewood Drive.
Great. Thanks Vince.
So just wanted to challenge a couple of statements that were made when we met last, Mr. Mayor. First one was the study, traffic study done by the ACHD, which was performed in 2020. It's a little irrelevant right now when you look at, you know, we're heading into 2024. Huge difference from going into COVID and then coming back into, you know, full traffic at its, at its peak right now. And then there was another statement made about ACHD widening Overland. Again, if you drive that path and, and travel that road, there's nowhere you can expand. Especially if they put in their development, now you're going to encroach on what they've built. You know, there's no way to expand that street. So and then you go down a little further, then you've got Fred Meyer, you've got Albertsons, you've got businesses that are there that you're going to, you're going to mow them down to expand Overland Road. It's not going to happen. So again, traffic is a huge concern, not only for me, but the neighbors, my neighbors. It's just something that really needs to be looked at. I think we need to validate when statements are made. You know, traffic studies done three years ago aren't relevant today. So I just asked the committee and you to consider that before we move forward with this project.
Great. Thank you, Vince. Did you also send that in written comment as well?
I did not.
Okay. Yeah. All right. We got some late correspondence that had mentioned some similar things. Thank you.
But I just wanted to be here today just to speak my piece.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
Um, next I've got Jerry Finnegan, Finnegan. Sorry, Jerry. Finnegan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jerry Finnegan. I live at 12459 West Castlewood Drive. One of the main concerns of the people that are directly affected by the decision you're going to make here tonight is traffic. During the Planning and Zoning Committee presentation, Mr. Stempel may have inadvertently misdirected P and Z members. When he stated, quote, "ACHD intends to widen Overland Road to seven lanes." This was just mentioned, unquote. The intent is to consider it. There is no current action on the ACHD Integrated Fiber Plan. And ACHD told me that it was planned to discuss this widening sometime between 2036 and 2040. The go no-go consent given by ACHD to this project is using outdated information, as Vince just said, from October 2020. They have stated, ACHD has stated that the acceptable level of service on Overland Road is 1,780 vehicles per hour. Now let's remember that number. We can realistically see current traffic volumes by looking at adjacent Cloverdale Road, where traffic flows were measured immediately before the pandemic and a year ago in November. During peak hours, Cloverdale Road, South Overland, at that intersection went from 1,120 vehicles an hour to 2,772 vehicles per hour, well over the 1,780 that is stated as the acceptable level. An increase of 147% in two and a half years. We can reasonably expect a similar change in traffic on Overland during that same period. At that 140% level, uh, that would mean 2,499 vehicles currently using that section of Overland. And that's 40% over the allowable by ACHD standards. Adding traffic to this would be this project, two projects to the west, I'm sorry, to the east of this property. And 398 apartment units approved by the city of Meridian that are currently under construction that have only one way to get out of their development and that's onto Overland Road. So all of that additional traffic is not even figured into this. ACHD further stipulates that driveways, when approved on a principal arterial like Overland, shall operate as a right-in, right-out only, and the district will require the construction of a raised median to restrict the left-turning movements. They clearly stated in their note on this project that an unlimited access driveway is temporary. Overland Road has long been considered the gateway to the southwest neighborhoods. We would like you to consider the needs of the people in the neighborhood currently in your discussions. And please just listen to what we say. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finnegan. Do we have anyone else here in the room tonight that's planning on testifying? You can just raise your hand if you're planning on it. Yeah. If you're planning on it, why don't you, why don't you go ahead and the person on deck, why don't you go ahead and come on and you can just sit right behind the microphone as well? Yep. Anyone else in here besides? Great.
Good evening. My name is Betty Berman Solo. I live at 1970 Cannonaro Way in Boise. It's about a half a mile from this project. This is a very unique riparian area unlike Fairview where four-story, five-story apartment complexes are frequently seen. I want, I would like you to keep that in mind. This four-story, single-use proposal misses a huge opportunity to provide an attractive element to our neighborhood. It has a natural source for a storm drainage pond to continue to welcome wildlife that's in that area, but also to, to provide an important filtration for well owners like me. That's my drinking well. Currently, other than being residential, it has no similarity to the existing residential. There are no four-story buildings within the Southwest Ada County Alliance. And it doesn't attempt to be compatible with our existing residential area. It gives back nothing but adverse consequences with 138 units providing a traffic safety nightmare on Overland Road. A mixed-use proposal offering the possibility of ownership would be a proposal that the city has encouraged during the rewrite. A mixed use. And that the city has encouraged time and time again. Yet no attempt was made to look at this, at this unique location. In this infill, a proposal can just be providing another apartment complex. This has to be more than another Fairview proposal. This has to be more than another Fairview proposal. There has to be something that benefits the existing neighborhood. A coffee shop on location where people can meet other neighbors on the first floor builds community. Overland Road is our gateway south to southwest Boise. This parcel should be an attractive addition rather than just a rush to put rooftops and jeopardize safe access to our neighborhood park and our school on the south side of Overland Road. I urge you to support the appeal and deny this present proposal. It's very, very precedent-setting, and I think they, the developer could do a much more compatible proposal with your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Was there one more in the back? I would ask if there's anyone else planning on testifying. Go ahead and come up and just sit in the front chairs. I think might be the last, though.
Good evening. I'm Tanya Clough. I reside at one zero eight zero zero West Smoke Ranch Drive, Boise, eight three seven oh nine. I, I had a big, long thing wrote out here that pretty much just recaps whatever one else has said. But when the, I don't know who it was that was on, online that brought up the bus schedule. Ironically, I was online looking at it too, and it's correct. The website is up to date as of right now. And it would, you would have to walk from Overland and Five Mile to Emerald Road to get to the bus stop. And if you wanted to ride to State Street, it would take you an hour and fifteen minutes to get there. Now, you got, you got one chance to get there early in the morning and one chance to get home at six fifty-two at night. So I think it's only prudent that before you make a decision, that everyone really looks and verifies, you know, what the bus route is there because all this infill is all relying on the bus routes and they're not there. Thank you.
And Kathy, you wanted to speak. Go ahead.
Yeah. Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. Kathy Corliss at eight five two eight West Vincent Street. I'm not as nearby as this. I'm at Maple Grove and Overland, but what I'm hearing tonight, and I wasn't planning on speaking this, but I'm concerned on for three particular points. One is on the outdated traffic study from what I hear is 2020. I do come up from downtown Boise onto Maple Grove, onto Overland, and it's a mess. And it's a mess starting at coal every day. And it's not just a mess at six o'clock. It's, it's busy, busy, busy on Sunday, Saturday, Monday through Friday, all the time. I think we need an updated traffic study. Two is the compatibility, which Betty Burman Solo brought up, is there are no four-story apartment buildings in that area. Not within Boise, i- in that southwest areas, that would make that a very, very dense populated, and it would set a precedence for that area in southwest Boise. We need density. That's no doubt. We need housing. But it also does need to be compatible. It needs to be a smart growth that goes within the area as well. And, and the third thing that I haven't heard about is that there's any affordability. Are we just building apartments to build more high-priced apartments? Or any of these going to be affordable for the residents of Boise? Thank you.
Do we have anyone online? Right. So we don't have anyone. Oh, all right. Okay. Anyone else?
I do have someone online now.
Okay. Anyone else here? Please raise your hand. Sir, you're here, so I'll do you, and then we'll go online. And if anyone's online that wants to testify, we need you to raise your hand now so that we've, we can put you in the list. All right, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Alan Hurstfeld. My address is nine four zero nine West Burnett Drive, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven zero nine. I live within the Southwest Ada County Alliance boundaries. As far as I know, and I don't think it's been denied here by the, by the applicant. If this project were approved as is, it would be the first four-story complex within the boundaries of the Southwest Ada County Alliance. Goal, Southwest, goal SWNC one of the comprehensive plan states maintain and enhance the semi-rural character of the Southwest. If, if this project were approved as is, it seems to me it would set a precedent and open the door to construction of four-story complexes within the Southwest planning area. That's all I have to say. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go ahead and go online.
And then council staff, my name is Gil Rupat. I'm with the Western States Carpenters. I live south of Five Mile, Lake Hazel, six four eight four South Mystic Glen. Unfortunately, this is not within city limits. That's for another discussion about annexation in the future with the city council. However, this does impact me. I, I do hear a lot of discussion here with traffic and, and by no means, um, we, um, me or, or my organization, opposition of, of growth. However, we would like to see discussion from the developers. You know, we hear a lot of the, the bullet points on, you know, the project itself. However, you know, we're talking about some of the discussion I had tonight with the growth and affordability being talked about by the developer. We'd also like to hear some more discussion and, and about, you know, some requirements on these projects and, and the what that looks like on the building aspect of it. You know, our contractors pay full family medical. They, they provide, they provide a pension and a liberal wage. And there's a lot of
I don't, I don't know that those things are actually what we're, we're covering in the agenda tonight. If you have any questions about the specific application, we can certainly go over those, but I think what you're asking for is a separate conversation. If you have any comments on the particular application, aspects of the land use, then we can certainly talk about that. And you've got about two more minutes.
Sure enough, I just wanted to make a comment about, about the housing. And yeah, that's, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else online? All right, we're gonna go ahead and have the applicant come back up. You have got applicant first, appellant second, I believe. Yeah, applicant first. We'll give you up to five minutes. Again, you don't have to use the whole thing if you don't want to.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Wilt.
Before Ben gets up, I wanted to just let him know that I did find the route. It's an inter-county route. So if he was gonna address that, I just wanted to make sure that he didn't use his time for that.
Good research, Councilmember Wilt.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, yeah, Route forty-two runs down Overland there, and there stops at Cloverdale. So I wanna, I, I guess maybe it was missed. It is in the staff report. It's in all the application materials. A traffic impact study was done for this project in two thousand and twenty-two, based on the current layout that it has. It was submitted to ACHD and the city of Boise. It was reviewed by ACHD, and they had no concerns about this project or the impacts on the traffic in this area. So this is not based on twenty twenty data. This is a twenty twenty-two traffic impact study that was completed for this project. Regarding the, the right-of-way and the future expansion of ACHD, when we got into this project, they got us their staff report kind of late. And they said, oh, you need to dedicate an additional amount of right-of-way to accommodate for the future widening. So that is dedicated with this project. The improvements that are installed will fall in line with where their future expansion will fall. So there is no impact to this project site. When, if, whether they decide to widen Overland Road in the future to seven lanes. This was adjusted, this project was adjusted through additional conversations with city staff to take it from sort of a more modern architectural design to a more residential design with pitched roofs, varied materials, using some more natural materials to break up the facade of this so that it does have a more residential feel to it and less of, of, of a modern feel that that may not fit in the more rural characteristics of this area. We feel like the inclusion of the riparian, the enhancement of that riparian area and the retention of that, the floodplain or floodway along the north really does pay tribute to some of the rural characteristics out here, as well as that Five Mile Creek drainage. If we do put a path along that, I think it just further reinforces that as well. I, I also want to make sure that it's understood that this developer owns and operates these facilities. This is not someone that builds something and then sells it and disappears. They're in the Boise market right now. They own and operate multiple projects. This will be one of those as well. The, let's see, I, I guess regarding the mixed use, I could, we could probably go around the city of Boise right now and find multiple apartment projects that have been built recently that do have a mixed-use component in them, and they do have vacant commercial and retail space that has been there for quite a while. And so introducing a vacant space into this project that may or may not be filled. I mean, it's great to think that a coffee shop owner would move in here. I personally know a coffee shop owner that has one down at Five Mile and Overland. And so they may, their business may be impacted. And I, I think that incorporating that here, again, after the discussion of planning and zoning regarding how kind of disconnected this site is from cross-connection and cross-access from other commercial sites, does not make it appropriate for a mixed-use project here. There will be some facilities for the residents of this project to meet and congregate and get to know each other and then move around the, the other rest of the neighborhood and hopefully meet their neighbors there as well. So stand for any additional questions you may have.
Great. Thanks, Ben. Any other questions for the applicant?
As I wanted to clarify my understanding of the record and planning and zoning, which was that ACHD, well, the commission relied on the twenty twenty-two traffic study and various parts of the application required you to dedicate an easement to ACHD. But the commission did not rely on Overland becoming a seven-lane road to justify its approval. Do I have that right?
Mr. Mayor, that's pump-up agent. Yes, they considered the right-of-way dedication and the traffic impact study that was completed with this project.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Wilt, any other questions for the applicant?
No, thank you.
All right, Ben, you're good to go.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll hear from the appellant again. Marissa, you got five minutes.
And so just to address, to address a couple of the things that were said. We just want to ensure that, well, yes, there is a bus stop, a bus route there. I, I see people waiting for the bus on Overland.
It runs very
Waiting because the bus will never come.
It, it runs infrequently. It's, it's not an everyday occurrence, and it stops at like six fifteen in the afternoon. This is the last stop, but is there. So we would just like to ensure that there is actually a bus stop, a bus shelter included with this new bus stop. Otherwise, the future is a very ambiguous timeframe. And I suppose the Neighborhood Association could ask for an inner-dies grant to do a bus shelter, but then the city of Boise would be paying for that. So we would like to see a bus shelter in there. There is, there is a, on Eight Mile Creek, which runs about half a mile further south from here. Right next to the Pepper Ridge Elementary School, there is a gravel pathway. And those types of surfaces are allowed within that area. It seems to work fine. And I have walked it several times. The neighborhood kids walk it all the time to and from school. And so there are those examples out there of those types of pathways within, much closer to creeks. There is also the issue of the fence, just a little information on the south side of Overland for that pathway that runs behind Fred Myers, that is the same Five Mile Creek that will run behind this apartment complex. And there is no fence on that. And that actually was a sticking point a few years ago when, when a townhouse development went in there. And it was determined that the fence was not needed for that project because people could manage their children as they saw it, I guess. But there is some discrepancy. Do you need a fence? Do you not need a fence? There's lots of opinions on that. There is some. So the, the issue with the highway district, and they had a, I hang out at the highway district, like every Wednesday. It's my second home. Last week, they had a session just talking about this exact thing. What does it mean when we say we're gonna build a seven-lane road? And they have decided that they are going to start talking about things in feet rather than lanes. So that there's no confusion. They are going to preserve right-of-way where a seven-lane road could fit. But the actual design of a road, or how many lanes it will have, will be up to the commission when they are doing their five-year work plan, essentially. So while this developer did have to push back his buildings to accommodate the potential, which I don't know what a seven-lane road was, like, let's say a hundred and thirty-two feet or something. They had to accommodate the space for a hundred and thirty-two feet of right-of-way. That does not mean that there will be a seven-lane road there someday. There is the potential for that. But if in a hundred and fifty years, we are all riding hoverboards and we need to change that footprint of what that public space looks like, it can be changed. It's not set in stone. They So the traffic impact study, the one thing that we were hoping to come out of that, and I cannot remember if that was completed with solely this project or if it was part of the project where there was the two parcels together. But we were actually hoping that there would be a requirement for a stoplight, a vehicle stoplight and pedestrian crossing at Lizazo. Because Overland gets incredibly backed up. That is the low-stress bike network. There is no crossing there. And there's not a crossing in that entire mile section for Overland. So whether it's now or when the next project comes along in just a couple of months, that will be something that we will push for. And that is all I have to say.
Any questions for the appellant? And I'm gonna give council another chance for questions for staff, and then we'll close the public hearing. Thanks, Marissa.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question for staff.
Go ahead, Councilmember Wilt.
Can you walk us through how this applicant, application would change with the modern zoning code in a few weeks?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can try to do that very generally off the top of my head. I don't have a lot of details in terms of process. The rezone would be pretty similar. As was noted previously, currently, this is zoned for a low-density residential. In that new code, it remains that same low-density residential zone, so they would have to rezone the property still. You know, they would likely be rezoning you know, potentially still to R three. And so, you know, in terms of height, I think the allowance would be a little bit taller. I know some of the parking requirements get a little bit lower. The density that's allowed increases a bit. Those are general changes that I can think of off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I guess one question that, or maybe a couple of questions that I have. So there's been a little bit of questions about pathway behind the building. And I'm, look through the pathways master plan. We don't actually identify a pathway on that stretch, but we do identify a pathway directly on the other side of the street. And I'm imagining probably the intention is to connect to the multi-use path that we're talking about Overland. And so I guess I'm just curious if there's been any other discussions with staff as far as a multi-use path behind the area.
Mr. Mayor, yes, one second. I'm gonna pull up my, it's really quick. Yes, I think that shows it all enough. So that is something that was considered and was discussed with the applicant. You know, understanding that these connections that exist on the other sides of the street carry through, you know, entire subdivisions and provide connections that aren't already provided by the streets. You know, for this subject property, a pathway through would go from that northeastern corner to the southwestern corner. Whereas the proposed pathway along Overland goes from the southwestern corner to the southeastern corner. Doesn't really fill in a gap in terms of pet and bike connection.
And then another question there, as far as pathways go, I mean, we really don't have any standard as far as what we have to build to. In the pathways master plan, we identify a variety of different surface types. There's nothing that would say that if we did put in a dirt pathway, that it would have to be ADA compliant. We, I think we can essentially put in what we're able to put in. And it isn't always, you know, pavement isn't always like the best that we would want it to be, or the ideal, you know, surface type for that specific location. Is there anything that would say that we would have to have an ADA-compatible compacted gravel path, or could we require gravel path without it being ADA compliant?
Mr. Mayor, I think you're correct that the pathways plan isn't super specific about I think you're correct that the pathways plan isn't super specific about the type of material that's required. Um, you know, I think we do always want to provide facilities that are usable by everyone. Um, you know, like I mentioned before, this is kind of duplicative of the pathway along Overland. So, you know, if that route ever was not accessible, there at least would be, you know, the ten-foot paved path along Overland that folks would have as an option.
Yeah, that's fair enough, I think, um, you know, in my mind, you know, certainly you do have that ten-foot path. Also, if you can put in a cheap dirt path that's next to a creek, an active creek and kind of a wildlife area, that's a better day for me in the neighborhood and a better day if I'm, you know, living in that apartment complex as well. So might be something, might be something we'd consider in deliberation, but thank you, appreciate it. Um, with that, I'll, I'll close the hearing and the item is before council. And and as a reminder, we've got two different items here, we've got an appeal, um, and we've got a separate rezone.
Just some, do you want me to comment before a motion, or do you?
Yeah, why don't you put a motion first? Um, if you get a second, we can put some comments in there and see what we need to do.
Well, I'll tell you what I want, and then if someone wants to put that in language of motion.
Let's hear it.
Okay.
Just say what you want, but I
I just got the manual, so. Um, yeah, I I would really like to see a public easement preserved for a pathway on the back, I agree with your comments. Uh, Councilmember Hallie Burton about, um, what types of walks I want, I would probably want fewer walks on Overland and more walks near a creek. Um, and I think that would be a missed opportunity if we didn't preserve that for the residents of the neighborhood, for the public and for the people that will be enjoying these homes here. Um, additionally, I think we should consider a fence that's more consistent with the comprehensive plan and with, uh, uh, the wishes, um, of the developer and and maybe even the Neighborhood Association there. Other than that, um, I feel like this is consistent with the type of development that we're wanting to see, um, along, um, places like Overland Road, including places like Fairview Avenue where, um, close to where I live, I would point out that we don't have any four-story buildings there yet, but, uh, if we could put people in homes and four-story developments there, we'd certainly welcome that, especially in places like, uh, that are zoned for mixed use. Um, so I'm supportive of this and, uh, with those, uh, two exceptions that I mentioned.
I guess what I would ask at this point, um, is that we do put a motion on the table. If there are any additional requests, um, such as the ones that you mentioned, that the motion maker, uh, include those or that folks ask the motion maker to include those if they don't, don't hear it, before we get into too much.
I'll put maybe a different motion on the table and then we can discuss it. I would deny the appeal in PU D twenty-three zero 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 one zero for mostly for the reasons in the staff report that there's not an identified reversible error in the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, and then
Let me elaborate very briefly. The design issues of, you know, kind of adding in another pathway or, uh, there were some other micro connectivity things discussed, um, are all valid. And I I take the Neighborhood Association's comment about the piecemeal development straight to heart, because like one of the things that happens is you get too much of the piecemeal development and then you're sort of forced to do more, right? There's no real connectivity here, the way the canal is configured, um, or the creek is configured, cuts it off even further. And, you know, we're gonna end up with more of the thing that the Neighborhood Association was complaining about. But under the code, you know, I think that 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 could have been weighed differently and different conclusions could have been arrived at in the Planning and Zoning Commission or other bodies that have that discretion. But under our code, we're looking for particular types of reversible error here and and I don't, I don't see it under our legal standards, so that's the basis of my motion. I think they may be conferring to try to get it changed, so we'll hold your breath.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Um, I agree with Councilmember Bajin, um, especially when it comes to an appeal, and I said this several times up here. Um, you know, our, our review is limited and, um, uh, really the ability to, um, to approve an appeal, we have to find reversible error. And unfortunately, even in the testimony today, even though many of the things that were said here, I I certainly agree with, and I think that's where we'll hopefully go next with, um, the next motion is that with respect to this appeal, there was not really an argument that rises to a level from a legal standard of being able to overturn this, um, because there's no reversible error.
Um, I just comment, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, and motion maker, um, your motion was just strictly to deny the appeal?
Correct. And the rezone is still, would be the next item that we would hear. Any further comments?
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna vote against the motion. Um, I think there's some converging issues here that I don't think the planning, that the Planning and Zoning Commission took in as a whole. Um, this is a really unique part of Boise because it's a stone's throw away from Meridian. I do think that this is too dense for the piece of property there. Um, you know, we paid a price to have VRT constrict its routes so that we could get more ridership and eventually expand. But the current footprint is really not sufficient there for this kind of density. And so I will vote against the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Walts, um, and with that, I'm gonna call, um, clerk, can you call the roll?
Willetts.
No.
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Haney Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Four in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Um, and now we'll entertain a motion about the rezone.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd move for approval of CR two-three zero 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 nine. Um, as presented with the following two exceptions. Uh, I'd like staff to incorporate, um, a, I'd like a public easement to be granted, uh, on the pathway along the creek um, with with no requirement that a pathway be built there by the developer. And then also that the open fencing, um, be required there instead of the closed, so with those two conditions added.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Before I second your motion, would you consider amending it to direct staff to come back with with that reason statement? Cause there's a couple of changes in it.
So amended.
Second.
And we've got a motion, a second discussion? No?
No, I don't talk. Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I appreciate the motion, I I will support, um, I will support the motion. I was very much in favor of wanting to have an easement in that pathway, I think that's really important and it was already articulated by my fellow council members. Um, I am, I will still vote for the motion, I am interested still in this balance, which I think I heard from, um, the developer trying to balance both what I appreciate very much and wanting to have the open fence, which I support. But I also do hear the issues around safety and security of the residents as well. So I I do still believe that there's a balance there, but overall, I'm I'm supportive of an open visual fence.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Walts.
Yeah, I appreciate, um, the council member's motion and trying to, uh, make some lemonade out of this. Um, I I still believe that this shouldn't be rezoned and so that I'll vote against it. But I do appreciate trying to address some of the concerns that have been brought up today.
Thank you, Councilmember Walts, um, a couple of comments that I've got here, uh, I appreciate the motion, I appreciate the the need to ask for that easement. I don't think we know exactly what's possible there or not, so requiring them to build something right now may not make sense. But having staff work with them and us examining what's possible there in the future, I think, is a, is a big win. Um, and, you know, even though it may be dirt, um, I I really like walking on dirt paths behind my house, uh, you know, where I live. And when it's rainy, I don't walk on them, um, and when it's dry, I do. Um, and we've got a beautiful creek right there running behind this neighborhood. You know, a couple of other comments, um, one, uh, Overland is one of the streets that we're examining for our future best-in-class routes. And right now, it's, it's really Vista Fairview and State Street. Um, but we are really looking hard at trying to figure out what the other ones in Overland certainly is one of those, those streets. Uh, the other thing that I would mention, because we've seen this on multiple applications, is that there's sometimes a request for a, um, screening fence that we have turned down on multiple occasions. And it just, it's always interesting to me that, you know, we want to make sure that we're welcoming people into our neighborhood, um, that they've got a great place to live. And I've never really thought that, you know, blocking a good view or blocking a wall is is a good way to do that. Um, and so I appreciate the request for, uh, examining an open fence. I think we can figure out, you know, ways to make sure that we're addressing that safely, but we can also make sure, um, that if there is a pathway there in the future, um, that we do have a, a nice-looking place for people to walk and not a big fence where you can't see anything. Uh, so I'll certainly be voting in favor of the motion. Quickly, please, uh, call him.
Uh, yeah, was, was there any safety concerns about the open fencing? Councilmember Haney Keith?
My understanding from the testimony is that, you know, the privacy of the residents that live there, and if there's a pathway, I'm trying to restate and people walking by, like, privacy, security, safety. And so I heard that there was a balancing that some residents wanted more of a closed fence, others want an open fence. So there, I, different people can agree as to what the right approach is there.
And I would remind council that we do, we will have another application coming here soon, you know, right next to it as well. You know, so some of these conditions will probably need to be consistent as we look at things in the future. And the the developer should be looking at those things, um, as well for that consistency. Cause we don't want a piecemeal approach, we want to make sure that we're doing things as comprehensive as we possibly can. So I would ask that you examine that as we move forward.
Uh, Council, or, um, Mr. Mayor, um, I do just have one thing I'd like to put on the record. Um, just out of an abundance of caution, I may have previously represented, um, an individual who may have owned this property at some point. I'm, have no association with anybody who currently owns it, um, or is developing it. But just out of an abundance of caution, I want to put that on the record.
Alright. Um, quickly, please call the roll.
Willetts.
No.
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Haney Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Four in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Um, I think that's what we got for tonight, um, thank you all for coming down, we do appreciate coming and testifying. Uh, I should have explained this at the beginning, I'm not the mayor, um, council president Hallie Burton, the mayor's out of town, and so I step in while, while she's not here. So please don't refer to me as as Mr. Mayor, um, as soon as we close the meeting, motion.
I I move, we adjourn.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Alright, quickly, please call the roll.
Willetts.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Haney Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.